Call this meeting to order. Pastor Rob Sparrows from Integrity Church could please come forward for the invocation.
Father, we lift up the people in that accident and we thank you, Lord, that your divine protection was over them. And Father, we invoke your choicest and richest blessings upon these good people, this dedicated city council, and their proceedings now in the mighty and precious name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior.
Amen. Thank you very much. Councilman Forbes, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Karumba?
Here.
Councilwoman Dewitt?
Here.
Councilwoman Carr?
Here.
Mayor Simmons?
Here.
Council Deputy Mayor O'Flynn?
Here.
Councilman Gibson?
Here.
Councilman Forbes?
Here.
Good evening, everybody. How are you?
Good evening.
We are going to move on to public comment on agenda items. Members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward at this time. Rick Steinmeier?
Hey!
Hey, Rick, welcome back, buddy.
Thank you.
Welcome back, Rick.
I'm feeling better. I licked my wounds and I want to compliment Laura for running a nice, clean campaign and I'm glad she's sitting up there and not me. You guys got tough work ahead of you right now. Well, I got the agenda and I read it all and from my understanding, there has been a 5.6% increase in taxable value in the city of Benita Springs, which is amazing considering we had a storm and people still want to live in Benita Springs and willing to pay the And that is a reward for a job well done by our government. I think that no need to roll back the rate because I think that is a reward that you should get for people realizing how a nice place it is to work and live and invest. Now Irma showed the world that the people can do when there is a need. First Presbyterian Church and Love Incorporated raised from all over the world $300,000, which they are distributing. They have some left, but it's still being used to help the people from the storm. Irma punished the people of Benita Springs. Now, the city wants to punish its people more with the cost of living increase. A rate increase of .8173 to 9.73 is a 12.2% increase on top of the 5.6% increase in the taxable value or 17.8% increase. Now, you try and sell a house and say, "Oh, by the way, we're going to have an 18% increase in your property tax this year." Of course, I think we have enough people in Benita, but that's my opinion. Now, I'm going to shop around. I think this line of credit, oh, by the way, last year we had a 9.9% increase in property value. So, that'd be 15% approximately in two years. Our cost of living is probably only 2%, but I'm going to shop around, see if I can find a line of credit better than the $45,000 that the mayor of Santa Bill has come up with. I think it's a very good idea. If we don't need it, we don't have to use it. Now, FPNL, a rate from 4% to 5%, that's a 25% increase in your electric bill. And 3.61 to a 4.61 is a 27% increase in your communications tax. Now, I got my Webster's out and I said, "Okay, greed, a desire for more than one needs or deserves." Now, so greedy, taking all that one can get without thought of the others in need. And then as covetous is a sin. That's one of the 10 commandments. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Glad to have you back. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Good evening. How are you?
Good evening. I'm fine, thank you, Mayor. And council members, my name is Richard Donnelly. I have a very brief letter I'll read to you, which relates to one of the items on your agenda tonight. Subject: Comments on Proposed Amendment to the LDC Creating Neighborhood Meetings. Dear Council Members, As both a private citizen as well as a zoning board member, I respectfully submit the following comments for your consideration as you review the proposed amendment to the city's land development code creating neighborhood meetings. One, notification requirements should not be any different from what is already established by the city for its notification procedures. Makes for consistency. Number two, the requirement for a second neighborhood meeting after the city has deemed an application sufficient, this post-sufficiency meeting, seems redundant, unnecessary, and excessive. Number three, the city might offer city hall offices as a possible accommodation for the neighborhood meetings and may charge a usage fee for such accommodation. And finally, number four, there should be a mechanism whereby an applicant can apply to the zoning board for a waiver of the neighborhood meeting requirement in those few cases where the application might have very little or minor impact on the neighborhood and by its nature. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Richard Donnelly. And these are copies for you all that I'll leave with this pretty young lady.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other members of the public? Hi, Kathy.
Good evening. I see my second Musketeers with me. Ben, I think, is up north, so we'll forgive him though.
Thank you.
I just have a quick comment. It's on the consent agenda, item G. Of course, it concerns Film Fest. Yay! Can you believe five years? And this year, Benita loves? What isn't there to love in Benita? But I just want to, on behalf of everybody on what Antonio lovingly calls us, the supporting crew, I think it is, something like that, yeah. And I'm also very proud to also be a sponsor. And of course, anyone who's been there knows what fun the gala is. But the most important thing is, enter. Listen, big money prizes, up to $2,500. 10 minutes or less. You can certainly, there's a lot of talent of people around town that can come up with something good. Benita loves. And what was really encouraging last year was out of 42 entries, 18 of them were young people. I mean, people in their late teens, early twenties. There's a lot of talent around here, so. Thanks again for having the city handle, the finance department handles the prize money. It's not that it's costing the citizens of Benita Springs any money. I just want to make that sure, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathy. Other members of the public? Hi, Linda.
Hello. Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Linda Schwartz and I'm a full-time resident of Benita Springs since 2001. And I'm here to speak on a couple of things. First of all, I support the tax increase. The council has wisely decided to halt a lot of development east in the city, which is our really only area other than Infill. So, we don't have the impact fees that other communities would have at this time. So, I think we need the tax increase in order to improve our services and continue the level of service that we've offered the community, that you have offered the community. The other thing I want to speak on is Spring Creek. I hope to have your votes and support for continuing this project, which has been going on for several years. I represent many people who are not able to attend tonight in asking you to please support this project. In Cedar Creek, we had flooding, street-level flooding, in over 40 homes. And we've since taken a lot of measures to try to improve our water management system, including hiring engineering firms such as Agnoi, Barber, and Brundage. They actually discovered a Spring Creek tributary going through our community. And the blockage of that was a major cause of flooding in the back of our community. So, with Spring Creek dredging and working on that blockage, that should really improve the situation in Cedar Creek. So, thank you for your support.
Great. Thank you, Linda. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Good evening. How are you?
Fine, thank you. My name is Marvin Hancock. I'm one of the directors of the Pelican Landing Community Association, and I come in support of the Spring Creek dredging project. I think you probably know that we, Spring Creek is a major property line for the community. We have seven watersheds which drain into Spring Creek. And of course, we also have some docks along Spring Creek behind Pelican's Nest, which are not usable because of the silting of the creek. So, on behalf of the Pelican Landing Community Association, I can tell you that we would be very grateful for your support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Good evening.
Nice to see you, council. Jerry Miller, for the record, for the Barefoot Beach Hotel. I'm here to speak on 12C. Just wanted to briefly say how I appreciate, you know, working with staff. We're excited about our hotel. Daniel Singh, the developer, will be down for the second reading on August 15th, so we're looking forward to that. But we, you know, appreciate the flexibility. We're going to build an exceptional, you know, true mixed-use project. And we're currently working on our one-year temporary parking, be about 60 or 70 spaces. We've still got some, you know, issues to work out on the site, but we're, you know, forging ahead with that. So, just wanted to say hello and glad to be here.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Other members of the public that would like to speak? Yes, sir. How are you?
Good, thank you. My name is Robert Holland. I'm a resident of Estero Bay Shores off of Spring Creek and a 20-year, or 29-year, full-time resident in the same home. And I'm just here to ask for your support of dredging Spring Creek. We've heard about it for years and years. The water quality, the danger in the navigation, besides the flooding upstream, that the, I feel, the tidal flow in and out has filled in the canals, the creek itself, and the mouth of the creek so bad that it's become very dangerous. And I don't know what I missed. I'm sorry I was late. There was a bad accident up here, but just wanted to voice my opinion and ask for your support. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Other members of the public that would like to speak? How you doing?
Good. I'm not used to public speaking.
Everybody's trying to be the last speaker, but you know what? There's been about four last speakers in a row, so you're up.
My name is Stephen Anderson, 24565 Kingfish Street. I'm also in that Benita Shores.
Right.
Or Estero Shores area. I have a lot of experience going up and down Spring Creek, out into the bay. After the hurricane, it seems that right at the mouth where the Spring Creek empties out into Estero Bay, it's filled in there, a lot more than it was the year before. I think the storm pushed more, or more stuff pushed down and ended up right there. So, now it's kind of like, almost like a dam. Because we've noticed at times, you know, our, I had my dock, how much higher the water comes over the dock when, and now with the water coming downstream, it's just going to back up towards us. And so, we're concerned about that and appreciate your support in helping us get this fixed.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you, sir. Any other members of the public that want to speak last this evening?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Fred.
I know there's a couple of people here from the Mechanical Contractors Association, and I'm not sure that they understand that this is their opportunity to speak unless you want to grant them that when we hit the green sheet.
Oh, please come forward. That would be great. Thanks, Fred, for pointing that out. I appreciate it. Good evening. How are you?
Good. My name's Rick Sims.
Welcome.
I'm representing SWACA, Southwest Florida Air Conditioning Contractors Association. We've been your air conditioning contractor association since 1978. Our company's been serving Benita for 58 years. We're a small company. Conditioned Air is with us. You've probably heard of them. They've been serving the community since 1963. And if you go way back in Benita, you maybe remember driving down Benita Beach Road and not seeing Haynes Air Conditioning. Haynes Air Conditioning is with us as well.
You remember that, Fred?
No.
No? All right. Just checking.
And you could have dropped your television off there and they would have fixed your TV back in the '60s. But anyway, we are very supportive of the community. We've grown up with its growing pains and its traffic, just as the rest of the community has. But we love the community and we provide jobs and do a lot of things that other businesses do that are good for your community. But as we watch these growing pains, we were compelled to come here today to talk to you about them, primarily about replacement air conditioners. Air conditioner replacements make up 45% of all permits. That's from buildings to fences to everything. It's 45%. We don't have the exact numbers on Benita to date, but we can, we know call year and we follow those from year to year and we know it's a large volume. You probably didn't even realize that because this happens very quietly. It's going very smoothly. So, one of our main concerns is that it stays that way. So, that as zoning, as we pull permits and abide by the law and we replace your air conditioner, that you're not held up on your worst day. Because a lot of times when we're replacing your air conditioner, you're already having a bad day. And so, that might not be the best time to get to meet your zoning people when it's... So, you know and we know, because we work in this community and we watched it grow, that there are lots of existing violations right now. And those people need air and you know they need air. In some cases, loss of revenue, discomfort certainly. And in some cases, it's a life safety issue that you have air conditioning. So, as you make your decisions going forward, we want to let you know that the way you've got it right now, it works smooth for everybody. We're concerned that people, which the majority of your districts have people with five acres, three acres, that do not have an issue. We're hoping that you don't come up with something that involves them at all. In other words, if you change our permit application and now we're going to do a review on all air conditioners that are bigger than they were before, that would be people with five acres of land. So, we ask you to be cautious to avoid changing things where it isn't needed. On the other side of it, we have customers that are in your districts that have violations right now. So, with the way you've got things right now, we'd have to roll up your sleeves and do a lot of variances. That's what you'd have to do to have air conditioning. So, we're hoping you can come up with some better solutions and a variance for each one.
Thank you very much.
And Tim from Conditioned Air has a short.
Okay, great. And if I'm picking on Fred, but Greg, you might remember that before Haynes was there?
Barely.
Barely?
Barely.
Okay. What year was Haynes there, by the way?
65.
He doesn't remember it.
The hardy was on the fireboard.
Welcome, sir. How are you?
Good evening. I'm well. So, again, I'm Tim with Conditioned Air. So, we have been in the area since 1962, actually.
Ooh, here we go with dates.
But I have been with Conditioned Air since 21 years ago, so I've been here a long time. And to solidify some of the things that Rick said, as the SWACA Association, we do represent licensed contractors. So, the biggest thing for us is to make sure that air conditioning companies are pulling permits for AC changeouts. And we don't have information specific to Benita, but we do know that about 65% of air conditioning changeouts are not permitted. And as a company that represents the SWACA Association as well as air conditioning contractors, we want to make sure that we're not impeding the permitting process by slowing it down. Not only is it a life safety issue, but we want to make sure we're encouraging contractors to pull permits and do things the right way. SWACA does not believe that the city of Benita can solve all the technical issues. There are many different solutions with all the different types of equipment that are available. And it should be up to the consumer and the contractor to approach that on a case-by-case basis and take all those things into consideration in when there is not going to be an encroachment onto the easement. Many of the neighboring Southwest Florida jurisdictions have added specific language to their local codes that target the communities that have those specific encroachment requirements. And we feel that that's probably the best way to approach the situation. Again, we don't want to create things that don't affect everyone. So, in summary, we do, like Rick said, the building official and staff are doing a great job with the way the permitting process is going at this time. We don't think steps should be taken that would impact the majority of the owners that don't have setback issues. Steps should be taken and designed with all owners of existing violations in mind, and we want to make sure that it's a proactive approach. So, again, the consumer's first interaction with zoning is not an unpleasant one. We suggest as SWACA Association to help you guys in any way we can, help with verbiage that will affect everyone and not cause more hindrance and avoid overregulation that's not going to encourage more unpermitted activity.
Okay.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Great information. Other members of the public that would like to speak? And if there's anybody else, come on up. Can form a line.
I hadn't planned on this, but since we're into mechanical and electrical kind of things. My name is Zach Davis. I work with American Infrastructure Services.
Zach, do me a favor and pull that mic up, buddy. You're a tall guy. No, thank you very much.
Sure. So, anyway, I work with American Infrastructure Services. We help you with your, like, your downtown remodeling stuff, doing the streetlights and whatever. I wondered, when are you going to, when do you think you want to take the poles out down there, the electric poles overhead? Because that would really help the appearance of the downtown Old City down there on 41. It also would be safer. There's a lightning, likes that stuff, and cars like to hit the poles and every, you know, there's a lot of safety reasons, but it will make it so much more attractive. And I know you were working on it because I was helping do it. I just thought I'd remind you that, you know, it's been a while since anything has happened. And all the, the pads for FPNL and all their transformers, they're already piped in down there. They're sitting there doing nothing. And everything is all ready to go, but you just haven't turned the switch. I've even put in some really nice services to run all the new services for the lights, but they're not hooked up to anything. And you'll see them if you drive downtown. So, I just thought I'd remind you of that, just in case it slipped by or something.
I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for the information and the reminder.
Okay. You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Other members of the public? All right, I see motion.
Can I qualify to be a member of the public?
You do.
And a dues payer.
Welcome.
Nice to see you. I want to talk about the Spring Creek dredging that you folks have on your table today. I had a conversation earlier with Matt and he briefed me on a few things that I wasn't aware of. For example, the, there's an oyster mitigation that has happened, and I thought that that was in Spring Creek. And I learned that it wasn't in Spring Creek. The reason I know it wasn't because we're still having one hell of a time getting in and out of Spring Creek with a boat, hitting the oyster beds that have been there for many years. And so, what I learned was that a seeding of, if that's the right term, of oyster eggs and oysters have taken a place, taken place around Lover's Key. I don't know if few folks are aware of that. Just seems to be a, several miles away from Spring Creek and it, but I guess the Army Corps of Engineers has, and other groups have ways of managing and dealing with situations that are, might seem to a layperson as weird. That one is weird. And we still have to exist with this, or coexist with this problem of the oyster beds in the creek. Now, the price that's, it's just unconscionable. It's unbelievable to me. I mean, it's beyond, it's beyond the pricing structure even of roofing dealers today. And what has happened in that market with respect to having to have a repair done to your roof for a replacement, 20%, 30%, 40% increase over a six-month period. It's terrible, but one has to accept it. But this is 100% increase and more. Now, I just want to bring something to your attention. You probably know, but it's gone unmentioned. A few months ago, or several months ago, after Irma, you guys were looking for money from us to offset the cost of having, to deal with the flooding problem in the city as a result of Irma, finally having come to a head. And instead of doing that, why don't you seek money from the South Florida Water Management District? These guys are sitting on a bundle, mucho dinero, like 200 million at this point. Now, they have different designation and classifications for it. But I would recommend that you pursue, in addition to trying to renegotiate this bid with whomever you're going to choose, and we, many of us do want the work to be done, but seek whatever you can from South Florida Management District as partial reimbursement because part of the original plan had to do with the mitigation of the water flow and sheet flow of water in the city of Benita. In addition to that, I hope you'll pursue them to offset the cost of anything that the city will have to deal with respect to the mitigation or the re-channeling or canaling or whatever of water having to do with stormwater management. So, that's the story, or that's my story.
Appreciate the information.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Other members of the public that would like to speak? This time, I really don't think I see anymore. Okay. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Before you do, I just want to make sure, we have, Councilmember O'Flynn is attending electronically. Counsel has to do a to-cepting, make a motion to accept that he can participate in the meeting and there is extraordinary circumstances.
I so move.
Second.
Okay. There's been a motion to allow Councilman O'Flynn to participate by telephone in a second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Karumba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dewitt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
And the second prong for him to...
Peter's in favor of participating by phone. That's good to know.
Yeah, that's all. Thank you, Audrey.
I was going to say, the second prong of that is that he has to be able to be heard by the city clerk as well as the room, so.
Yeah. Now, Peter, we can hear you fine, and I don't know what it is, but I think maybe we were getting some background noise. I don't know if it was on your end or our end, but if you put it on mute until you're ready to speak, that might be helpful, but it might be on our end too. I don't know.
Yeah, I think it may be, because I've had it on mute, Pete, for the whole thing.
Okay. Okay. So, it's definitely on our end, which is actually on our...
I'm going back on mute.
Agenda, yeah, it's back on our agenda tonight about the sound system of all things. Okay. Consent agenda, counsel. What's your pleasure? Motion to approve all? And a second?
A second.
Okay. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Dewitt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Okay. Let's see. Boy, that goes all the way down HI. Look at that. We have an addendum to the agenda, which is to approve the general fund budget resolution to transfer budget from assigned fund balance for an economic development grant for commercial property located at 10450 West Terry Street, Benita Springs, Florida. And this is green sheet number 18-08-0254.
And Mayor Simmons, that would be a consent item that the city, unless city council desires to pull either that one or the second one on the addendum, which is the additional resolution to remand Benita Grand Mine for six months after conclusion of the BG mine lawsuit, plus any necessary time for appeals. If those two items could be considered part of the consent, if you wish to vote for that right now for those two items.
No, thank you very much for that, Audrey. I didn't know if everybody was looking at it. I appreciate that. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
I so move.
Okay. So moved in a second. Okay, I guess we'll vote on the two addendum items separately. Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Aye.
Great. Thank you very much. Audrey Vance, could I meet you up front, please? Ooh. Well, this is wonderful. I called it the Paul Bunyan Award, but that's not quite what it is. So this is on behalf of the City of Benita Springs, a certificate of congratulations we proudly presented to Audrey E. Vance, recipient of the 2018 Paul S. Buckman Award, given in recognition to the state's most outstanding municipal attorney from the Florida Municipal Attorneys Association, signed Mayor Peter Simmons, August 1st, 2018. Congratulations. That is great. There you go, Audrey. Do you want to say a few words?
Sure. It was a pleasant surprise to, to win the award, and I want to thank all of my city family. City of Benita Springs has been an awesome place for the last 18 years. I've worked on amazing projects and worked with amazing staff and amazing elected officials over the last 18 years.
We're not so amazing, but you guys are.
Well, we get things done, and we wouldn't get it done if you didn't have our back and support us on getting things done. So I want to thank everyone, as well as the citizenry. And I've been able to do some great things over the last years. The fracking ordinance, for example, and the, and things, we've had some fun times in Benita. So thanks.
Wonderful. Congratulations, Audrey.
Thank you.
Audrey and I maybe have never had a picture. I don't know.
I don't think so.
Counsel, do you want to get in?
Oh, yeah.
Sure. Fred, you can get in a picture if you want. I don't know what you're up to over there, but I'm just checking.
How do you want to stand up? Okay. One, two, three.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Adhere. Adjourn. Audrey, congratulations. I mean, that is a statewide award. That's, that's remarkable. Great work. Okay, we're going to move on now to item eight, which is a continuation of our discussion from July 16th, 2018 City Council Budget Meeting. And this is addendum item B below. Additional information is attached to the addendum. I can certainly read this. Do you want to tee this up, Arlene, or...
Well, I think the first item you had asked, we looked to address, is you had some information that you received from the City of Sanibel regarding a line of credit. And I didn't know if you wanted to elaborate on your conversations with Mayor Raine and we, you had requested we put that...
Sure. No, 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 absolutely. Certainly will and glad to do that. As we look at budget, we're in budget season. We've had budget workshops. We're looking at, obviously, the bottom line. We're looking at what the city has laid out in terms of hurricane costs, which will be reimbursed sometime. So for those that try to balance a budget at home, you know, I mean, I think you can certainly understand that concept. You lay out all your money. You're going to get reimbursed sometime, but you don't know when, so that makes it, look, you have to look at different ideas potentially for funding. And what Mayor Kevin Raine of Sanibel had shared with me, that rather than increase the mill rate or increase, or do anything else, what they did is they went out and worked with the bank to get a line of credit. So in other words, you know, it's not a hard concept, but the money's there if you need it. If you don't need it, you don't spend it. Audrey?
I just want to point out the city charter, and I don't know Sanibel's charter, but our city charter does require an ordinance should we go forward.
Okay. Great. Thanks, Audrey. So that is, I guess, the discussion there for item A. Fred?
Yeah, I would, I would like to endorse this idea for the following reasons, and I would say we should pass a motion tonight authorizing the finance director to get a credit line. There is a charge, typically it's three, four grand, but you don't want to wait to when you need it because it takes too long to get it. Now, that doesn't mean we're going to be on a bank loan on a permanent basis, but that would give you time, if we got in a mess, to where we could then do the other thing where you issue bonds and all that other stuff, where you get better interest rates in a longer term. And there's no harm in having one. If you ever need it and you don't have it, especially after having an ordinance, we're a long time of being in a crack, so I don't see anything wrong with authorizing it.
Mayor?
Amy, yes.
I have a question because I think the idea of having a line of credit had been introduced months ago when we were in the middle of the crisis. And, and a line of credit is to be used for funds that you need to pay immediate bills for. What we're looking at, I thought is what we were looking at, was a process by which we could replenish what's called the unassigned general fund balance, which is not something you would borrow for. You're supposed to, I mean, we would have to borrow money to put it into this other line item, which, I'm sorry, I don't understand how you would want to do that at all. We need to generate revenues that would be somewhat permanently put into there so that over time, we would accumulate in there a balance more like what we've been carrying for the past six years, which is what, Arlene, correct me, you showed us, you told us what, how we've been, what balance we've been carrying over the past six years.
It was approximately, we had approximately six, six million.
Like five or six million, but over, it was a five-year period.
Yes. And then there was a reduction with the transfer out for the Wonder Gardens. There was a reduction at that point in time.
Right. So the average over the last five or six years, that, we always started the year with a balance there, and we're starting that with zero. And I thought that in our last budget discussion, we had raised concern about that, and there was an interest in replenishing that over some kind of reasonable period. And I, and if I remember correctly, we said, let's do...
A million.
I threw out three million, and nobody said they want to do five, or maybe somebody said, but I said, let's do it over three years and try to put a million in there every single year. And then if at the end of it, we finally get FEMA to pay us or whatever, we can use part of that money to bring us up to the five million that we've traditionally carried because that's a prudent way of running a municipality, in my view. But it...
So let me ask you, Amy, how would you propose we do that?
Well, it does, I think what we need to do is decide, first of all, whether this is something that we subscribe to. Do you think it's important to get that number from zero up to some number over some period of time? We need to pick up what that number should be. We could do it a variety of ways that Ann had already presented to us. We could do it through, it's definitely through raising taxes. We have communication fees that we could raise, or we could raise the mill, mill rate, the dime that she suggested, to give us about a million dollars in there. But unless we're raising revenue to be kept in that, in that area, we're not doing anything. And we certainly don't want to borrow from it because we don't really have a cash, we don't think we have a cash flow problem, or we think we could probably get through the year unless, you know, we get through September and something bad happens. But it's not a cash flow problem. It's the difference between a balance sheet, starting the balance sheet in a prudent way, or cash flow is totally different. That's what you need the, the line of credit for. But we don't, it doesn't look like we probably are going to need that either way. We're not going to know it until we get through the year. But I, I would not be in favor of borrowing to solve that, the problem that I expressed. And I didn't, I thought that's what we had signed on when we talked at the budget. Am I wrong? I mean...
No, at the budget meeting, the council discussed looking at replenishing the unassigned fund balance at approximately a million a year.
Right.
To, to get in, over three, a three-year period to replenish it back to three million. That was the discussion. And then on the green sheet, staff provided some alternatives, and they are, they are tax alternatives.
Fred, I'll, I see you've got something to say, and I do, too. Probably we all do. But, so as you can imagine, and I say it lovingly to Thad, but when the press sits in on workshops, as they should, and that's part of the process, I've been hammered with press requests lately, and I am on the record as saying, I don't see the way to get, to refund this is by increasing taxes or increasing the mill rate or assessing a one-time fee. I don't see that as the way of getting there. So we don't all have to agree on that. Sounds like Amy and I probably don't. But there are five other members up here that have opinions, and I think that's where we are right now. Fred?
Well, I was going to say that I wasn't proposing this as something we jump in and use for a long-term solution, but some opportunity came up, we needed to use some money. Having a credit line is a good thing. It don't cost much to get it. The amount of money and Councilman O'Flynn, I believe, is on the phone. He said the hole in the doughnut was nine million. Is that not right, Councilman O'Flynn?
Yeah, let me just say, Pete, I can hardly hear Fred, but I did hear the last few words.
Yeah.
So if you want, I'll offer my views, and I'll try to be succinct.
One question I have. Not only is the nine million what you said, but does the nine million include the three and a half million roughly that we lost on the not getting paid for the Wonder Garden loan?
No, it does not.
So it'd really be 12 and a half. It could be, arguably.
But could, Fred, can I just briefly answer your question? The nine million wasn't my number, it was staff's number. And the way I think of it, Peter and council members, is we had eight, eight so far, another million this year, nine million out the door for Irma. Three we know we're not getting back, period and a story on that. That's three million out the door. Then there is the additional three and a half, or three, that Fred's talking about. That's six. And then we have the other six that's out there that, in spite of all the diligent efforts of our finance staff, we simply don't know when that's coming back. So that's my reflection on Fred's question.
Yeah. And I would just add that, you know, Amy, part of this, and I know you know this, or I assume you know this, when you say, how do we replenish it? Well, we pass this budget, the meter starts ticking again. We, we're replenishing the second we pass this budget with the increase in home, with property values. By holding, and I want to be very clear on this point, by holding the mill rate where it is, if, if that's what we ultimately decide to do, there is more money coming into the city of Benita Springs because property values have gone up. If property values were going down right now, I think it would be an entirely different discussion. But I'll just go around the horn. Mike, what are your thoughts?
Well, I kind of like the idea of doing the line of credit because we do still have reserves. We haven't completely wiped those out, right?
No.
So that's what, 1.1 plus four, or 1.?
It's, it's, it's five million, 5.1 million. 5.1 million. It's the one million for the hurricane.
So we still have, we still have our reserves. What we used was extra money that was still in the account that we, that we use for projects here and there whenever we want to get them done sooner. So it's not really like we're hurting for reserves. But if we did have another hurricane or something, it, it cost us more than what our reserves are. So it would be a good, a frugal idea to have this line of credit to cover that. As far as raising taxes, whether it be, call them fees or whatever, there's still taxes on people. We're getting money back from FEMA. Yeah, we're only getting six million back, but that's about what our unassigned balance was. At home, I can't just go and go run to the boss and say, I need a raise because, you know, I had to spend so much money this year. It's, it's not how it works, and that's what we're basically asking to do. So if I'm in a bind at home, I may need to take out a loan or use a credit card to buy something and pay it back over time. So I, I think that's what we should be doing, too, and, and not just, you know, grabbing more money when we can.
Well, and I, and correct me if I'm wrong, Arlene, or Ann, but of the three million that we're not going to get back from FEMA, there are state programs where we can get up to 50% of that back. Is that correct?
Well, we've identified projects through the local mitigation strategy, and we're going to be going after grant funds for those projects we've identified as specifically storm mitigation projects. And then there are other FEMA reimbursement funds that, as we continue to get invoices back on, that we'll be presenting to FEMA for reimbursement for as well.
Right. Okay. Laura?
Well, I actually agree completely with what Mike and Fred said, that we should just have the safety net of having this loan in place because if we do get another Irma, we won't have the ability to have gotten the money that we needed already accrued. So, and maybe we could even get a better loan from the bank because I think Sanibel's flood levels are higher than ours. We have, like, areas that aren't flood-zoned. So maybe we could negotiate a better term because Sanibel's an island.
Right. Right. Okay. Thanks, Laura. Greg?
I agree. I think that, I do want to pile on a little bit what Mike said, basically. But no, I agree, I don't have a problem with the line of credit, as long as the line of credit's used for a rainy day, not for replenishing our taxes, not for replenishing the unfunded fund balance. But to go along with, and this may not be popular to council, but like Mike said, as a homeowner or as a, let's say, a business, you usually don't do those things. You may not want to do the projects you had in the chute, and I think that's going to be the unpopular thing. We may not move forward with whatever project we want to move forward with for three or four or five million dollars down the road because we can't afford it. Now, that's something I think that all of us, the seven of us, need to really sit down and look at when it comes to doing the budget and what the taxpayers want. Let's use the quadrant study. Let's use Logan Boulevard. Let's use X, Y, and Z. If we can't afford to do those things because of Hurricane Irma, we're waiting on the money to come in from FEMA, then we may have to put those off for a year. Or maybe that's where we make the hard decision to pull it out of this rainy day fund, this five million. But sooner or later, we still have to pay it back, and we've got to pay the interest rate, the interest rate back. That's my philosophy on it. You know, if we're tightening our belt, that means, you know, like Mike said, you know, you may not want to go out and buy the new TV, or, you know, you're going to do what you have to do by putting a roof on, but you may not have to get new cabinets or whatever else that got destroyed during Irma. So that's kind of my philosophy on it. If, if, if we are as cash-strapped as we think we are, where we have to raise millage, we have to raise taxes, then maybe if the public doesn't want to do that, and we've hearing them loud and clear, then some of the projects that we want to do may not get done. And, you know, kind of put it back on them. Let them tell us, hey, we really want to do Logan Boulevard. We really want to do X, Y, and Z. All right, it may have to cost us a few pennies on your, on your ad valorem. So that, that's kind of my philosophy on it. I don't have a problem with this. I think we can get a better rate, possibly. I think that's something that Ann can go out, I mean, you know, I think she can go out, I mean, even if it's nothing more than getting a second mortgage on a couple things.
Right. Right. Amy?
I don't know where to begin. First of all, I, I do think, I can understand what you're saying about that, but I think we need a clarification from Arlene and about whether we can do these readjustments on our projects because a lot of the projects that you're talking about would not do anything to affect the unassigned general fund balance. And as you know, we have asked the staff to make a full court press, to go for grants from every known entity that we think we might get some success with, including the South Florida Water Management District. And every one of those projects require a commitment of some amount of money, 25% or something. And when those projects are considered, they look at what money was earmarked for those kinds of projects. So I think it would be very short-sighted to, and the, and I think the mayor had asked me, how do I expect to replenish this unassigned balance? The alternative is definitely to also cut back on expenditures. And as you know, we asked the staff last year to cut out a million and a half from the expenditure line item, and it wasn't from the projects that they cut that out. So if you think that there's another million in there in the budget, which I don't think there is, I think it was pretty close to the bone last year, so I don't think we could ask that. And I, and I just, you know, unless we go through a whole budget analysis right this expenditures. And as you know, we asked the staff last year to cut out a million and a half from the expenditure line item, and it wasn't from the projects that they cut that out. So if you think that there's another million in there in the budget, which I don't think there is, I think it was pretty close to the bone last year. So I don't think we could ask that. And I, and I just, you know, unless we go through a whole budget analysis right this minute, I suspect that the projects that you're talking about would not lead to any improvement in the unassigned balance. In fact, you know, the budget itself was gonna end up with 700 something thousand dollars in that amount. So at the end of the year. So that answers your, the point that you brought, Mayor, that you said that over time, we could add to that. It is true. But when we looked at what would be added to that in a year, it was still kinda inconsequential in a way.
And that is, that is a projection and depending on how we do movement in the further item, the Spring Creek Restoration Project, that could, that is, there's a potential reduction.
Correct. We're gonna vote on something that might cost an extra $300,000 that isn't even in that budget. So that could be, isn't that what's gonna happen if we?
If you were to move forward with that, it would affect that anticipated, that we would probably end up with half that. So I come back to my original statement. We have to decide whether we are comfortable starting our year with zero in the unassigned, unassigned general fund balance.
And if we think it's prudent and that the policy that's been followed over the past six years by this council and previous councils, if that wasn't a good way to run the city, then I think it probably was. But we're going to be reversing that kind of policy that we've had in the past. And, and again, I think the, the information that was given to us in regard to how much any, even the 10%, the 10 cents, to the vast majority of the people, we're talking about a tax increase of $10 or $25 or something like that. And even in the, in the high rent district, we're talking about $100. That's what it's, we're talking about. So if that kind of payment we're asking our citizens to make is too much, and they would prefer that we start a year in kind of a tenuous situation, and not maybe only this year, but maybe the next year, if we knew FEMA was gonna pay us this year, we wouldn't be talking about this. But again, I'll tell you my experience from my sister, who, who is a council person in Alavale, New Jersey, who got their final payment from Sandy this month. You know, it's supposed to be better, but that's. No, it's not New Jersey. It's FEMA. It's FEMA is what it is. So, I mean, I hear stories like that and it makes me uncomfortable. So, you know, I'm gonna vote against not funding that at a some reasonable level. And I think a million dollars is, is the least we can do that. We probably should be doing more. And I, and I personally don't mind spending the hundred dollars or more, 200 that we're gonna pay for the extra, even if it goes up 10. I, I propose doing it through the communication and the other one, which I don't think gets you a million dollars because it's something that has an end date on it. We said it would be gone in 2022 or something. That's what the ordinance says. That's the only reason I propose that because it's, once you raise taxes, ad valorem, it's very hard to go backwards. But if you do something that sunsets and we automatically do that, then we know that we've done it for a specific purpose, was to, to keep our city in a good financial position. But that's, you know, that's my position and, and, you know, I'm only one vote.
No, I understand. I understand. I've been on an island myself, and I'm not saying you are. But Peter, I'm, Greg, I know you have your hand up, but Peter, did you have some comments?
Yeah, I'd appreciate that, Pete. I think this is a great conversation. I'd just like to make a few points. One is, I do think it makes sense to pursue the line of credit. But with respect to that, I agree with Amy. There are two different points here. One's cash flow, one's the reserves. Line of credit makes sense to have that lined up, all the sense in the world. A few other observations. We have, at the end of the agenda tonight, the Spring Creek project that Matt and others have been, well, Matt primarily, his whole staff have been working on for years through the Army Corps, permitting, et cetera, et cetera. It's gonna cost $350,000 more. That's, that's basically gonna come out of a zero general reserve budget. And the only way I can see it's gonna get funded is because in the year, we're gonna start to creep back out of that hole to 700,000 at the end of the year. But that's a perfect example why you can't be, you know, just swimming along the bottom with respect to reserves. That's 300,000 is gonna come out of the 700,000. Just one other reflection, which is, we were hit big time by this hurricane. We all know that, all right? And you look around town, and I've talked to a bunch of people in my community about this, and there isn't, you know, what are we, 60% communities here that are, you know, have community associations? These numbers are running, I just heard one yesterday out east on Beach Road, out past where Fred lives, $2,000 per household. Where I live, it's 250 plus another several hundred dollars. I heard of another community in my district, they were whacked by the hurricane, and they have an assessment as well. No one wants to have to pay, but they're doing the prudent thing. And I feel that's the way it is with respect to this. We're asking for a person with a $250,000 house to pay $25 if we go the ad valorem rate. I think people out there understand that. They understand how frugal we are. They understand what a great job Arlene is doing, the way she brought this budget in. And they understand we're pared down to fundamental projects. We don't have projects that are kinda wishless stuff. We've got Logan. We have the Quadrant Plan. Five million for the Quadrant Plan was in that reserve number that got stripped down to zero. So I know this is tough. Who, who on this council came in and said, I want to raise taxes? No one. But it's, it's, it's a prudent thing to do in this circumstance. Either the way Amy said, so I'm with Amy on this. I hear her saying she'd rather go the communications tax route versus ad valorem. I, I don't feel strongly about that one way or another. So thanks for hearing me out.
Thanks, Peter. Greg?
Well, I kinda, I do, I do agree with Amy. I think with the communication tax and electric, it's 1.1 million, seven and four, isn't it?
Yes.
So it'd be 1.1 that we would get from that. And unfortunately, I mean, like Amy and Peter both said, we may have to do both. The only comment I would wanna make is, you know, between the 12 million that we had before the economic recession or downturn to what we had before Hurricane Irma, that those amounts weren't accumulated over one year. They were accumulated over the entire lifetime of this city. So I don't think that whatever we raise, whatever we raise the millage or whatever we do with the communication tax, it shouldn't be all in one false swoop with the broad brush. We may have to take, you know, how do you eat an elephant? One bite at a time. So this is a $6 million or $6 million elephant we're trying to eat. We can't eat it all at once. So we're gonna have to take little bites. We may not have the $6 million that we like to feel comfortable in the bank for a couple of years. But if we could have it as a, as a, hey, if we need it, we can call somebody to get it. So that's why I would support this. I would not support it if it's going to go, you know, we're gonna pull it out day one and put it in the bank for just in case. It's gonna be a drawn account that we, the seven of, the seven of us would have to agree, or the majority would have to agree, all right, it's worth pulling it out of this reserve. I.e., in my mind, what we would pull it out for? We get hit with another hurricane. We get hit with a tornado. We get hit with some type of disaster where we can't recover or pull that much money out of the general fund without crippling the city. That's what I see this for. Not to continue with Logan Boulevard, not to continue with the quadrant study. You know, that's what I think this, this five million would be. And again, we would only pay interest or we'd only pay principal and interest on what we actually borrowed. And again, we would have to, when we go to borrow, I feel that we would have to have at least a clear vision of how we're gonna pay it back and when we're gonna pay it back, and what are we gonna use to pay it back. And it can't be, my personal opinion, it can't be FEMA that may show up five years down the road because we don't want to pay five years worth of interest on something that we're betting on the come line or something like that, like playing craps.
Is that a motion I hear, Greg?
Yes.
I'll make it, yeah. I have no problem.
I would second it.
Okay.
That's gonna be my stipulation.
What are we voting on? Sorry. Make a motion?
We gotta make a motion to start the ordinance process to look at a line of credit.
Right. I want to point out what you need to do. I can get an ordinance, but I can't get an ordinance until I actually know the name of who you, who will be providing the line of credit, who is the bank, and what is not to exceed dollar amount. Those things should be occurring by finance when they shop it. So the motion should be to authorize staff to begin shopping the loan and direction to staff to prepare the ordinance once we have the bank. And at that point, I'll bring a first reading of an ordinance to you.
Okay, great. There's been a motion and a second, and I know further discussion. Fred?
Two points. One is, I think if we stick totally with what Audrey said, staff could get that information so they could give it to her to fill in the draft ordinance. Secondly, I think you might be able, I don't know, I gotta ask Audrey, is it possible that you could say the loan will, the line of credit will be with either X, Y, or Z banks so that we got a choice of three instead of just one?
I, I could prepare three ordinances, which would be easier than having X, Y, Z banks. This is borrowing money. Borrowing money is very serious, whether we're talking about your individual or whether we're talking about the city having a line of credit. Because when you are borrowing, if there's people who wish to challenge, you want to make sure you meet all your procedural requirements. So I don't want an ordinance that's so iffy that it's not going to be valid.
Amy?
Well, hang on. Hang on, Amy. Fred?
The only thing I was gonna say is, I think it's real important in the whereas's and all that, that the spirit of what Greg has ordered, his motion, is that this is to be used in an emergency basis. And, and I don't think it would be used as a long-term loan. It would give you time if you needed money to go out and have Ann look at bonds and other issues and get something at a better interest rate for a longer term. It's strictly an emergency stopgap if we need it. We may never need it.
Right.
Do you want something requiring a super majority of, I'd rather not use the word emergency because emergency can be very difficult. But what about something where you, any borrowing from this line of credit will require a super majority of council?
Sure. Sure.
That's all right.
The only point I'm making is that there's no urgency in the sense of, we, we're not gonna have the hurricane next week. There's nothing brewing out. And we're gonna have another meeting. So I would really like finance to come back with us with something more specific than what we're talking about. And I agree with all the particulars that people are talking about. We don't have to make that decision. We don't need to build in any flexibility because we'll have real information in a couple of weeks, and then we could, we could vote on it.
No, we're just voting on whether we want to proceed down the road. So there's been a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karumba?
Aye.
Councilman Duitt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Great. Wonderful. Now, we're gonna move on to item B, which is establish the proposed operating ad valorem millage rate for the 2018 tax year. And this is green sheet 18080248. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
I propose that we put in the 10 cents in here because it's just the maximum. We're not saying that we're gonna do this. Isn't this correct?
Correct.
All right. And because we seem to be uncertain about what we want to do, just to give us flexibility for our real, when's, when do we really have to decide the actual?
September.
Oh, we have September. So we have between now, now and September to duke it out between us to see what we want to do. But this will allow us the flexibility and plus the communication tax, and then we could get the numbers together. We could think about it philosophically, and then we could also say we don't want to do it. We still will have that opportunity. Isn't that correct?
Correct.
So just to give us flexibility, I think we should set it at, what is it, 91 or something? Whatever the number is.
918.
Second.
9173.
91, sorry.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
No.
Councilman Forbes?
No.
Councilwoman Karumba?
Aye.
Councilman Duitt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
No.
Mayor Simmons?
No. Okay, so I'd like to make a motion that we hold the, the mill rate consistent with what it is now. Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Roll, okay?
I do have a question. What are we gonna do about the other issue that was raised? If you don't do, if we don't, if we keep it at the same, how are we gonna, are we gonna just forget it? Isn't that what we should be talking about?
Talk about it. It's your.
No, well, this is, I'm asking you. I mean, if we don't raise the taxes, are you saying that we don't, we shouldn't replenish the unassigned general fund balance?
Counsel?
Well, that's the question.
Well, but we, we have other things on the agenda that.
Like what?
Well, the communication.
So you're saying that you prefer another, an alternative funding ballot thing? Shouldn't we just, are we saying we're not raising any fees or we're not raising any ad valorem? Is that what we're saying?
I'll say I'm against it, yes.
Both, both of those? Because that's really what we should be talking about.
We had to outlay that money. We will eventually get $6 million back from FEMA. It's, you know, it's the same thing at home. You know, if I have to use the extra money that I have in my checking account to pay in an extra expense that I wasn't planning on, I have to figure out a way to make that work and slowly build that back up. I didn't get that extra money in there just by going out and, you know, asking for more money. It's, we're gonna get it back. If we do raise taxes and build up that extra $6 million, then FEMA gives us $6 million. Are we gonna send refund checks back to everybody?
Because you pointed out, Amy, that we don't lower taxes. We only raise.
Well, that's why, I mean, my preference is to do the communication because then at least you're not gonna keep that tax going in the future. But what I want to discuss at this point is whether we have a consensus to at least raise money to fill that up. I mean, if, if the council doesn't want to go above zero, then that's, that's what we should be voting on.
I'm not so sure there's a consensus. I think it, I think maybe you got a sense of the four to three vote, but I don't want to speak in favor of, for anybody else. But am I, I'm on the record. I've been quoted. I'm in the press. I've been on TV. I've been in the newspaper as being against raising the mill rate, against any special assessments, against any communication taxes, against any increases of any taxes. I don't know how else to say it. I'm happy to have all the discussions we want, but that's where I am.
Well, I think that brings up a discussion and kind of piggybacking on Amy. And that's fine. I can go either way on it. I mean, but I guess my question is, is we'll choose the Spring Creek. Where is that money gonna come from? We've got at least four to six people here tonight wanting this Spring Creek dredging. If we don't raise taxes or communication taxes, that, we don't have the $350,000 to do that with. So that, I mean, that's where I'm going at, and that's kinda what I was piggybacking on Mike. Projects are gonna suffer if we don't do something. And that's, I mean, it's not good, but it's not bad either. It just depends on how, how important the projects are either in your neighborhood or my district or Amy's district or Councilman Forbes' district. So that, that's where I'm coming from. Something's gotta give. You're exactly right. Something's gotta give. Now, is it projects or is it the $25 as Councilman O'Flynn puts out when you're talking 10 cents? Is it, you know, the 1.1 million dollars that we would get in communications and electric taxes? I don't know. I can't answer that. Only we can, all of us are gonna answer it. I think there, we need to be a little bit responsible for building up the reserves because, you know, we have in the, you know, near future, there's gonna be a correction in the home market. Last year it was 10%. This year it's 5%. What's, what's it gonna be next year? It may not go up next year. And now we are flat again. And now we're gonna have to, to make ends meet or to start raising the unassigned fund balance, we're gonna have to raise taxes even more. And again, we don't know. If, if we knew, if Ann could pull out her crystal ball and say FEMA will give us that $6 million December 7th, 2020, then great. We would plan till 2020. But we don't know that. And I still think we've got aging structures here in Benita. We've got 21 parks that need things done to it. We have a rec center. We have a pool. We have this facility that the AC is going out. Things that we haven't planned for, either in a capital improvement or in a replacement schedule that we're gonna have to deal with. Now, if we're gonna deal with it with this $5 million, then that's, then that's what we're gonna do. But we still gotta pay that money back. It's not a, it's not a free loan. So somewhere, we're gonna have to start building up that savings like Mike's talking about. Yeah, that savings didn't come overnight. We had to skimp and save and, you know, not do this, or not go to Disney World, or not go to Wally World, or not go to here or there. And those are the projects I'm talking about, what's gonna suffer. Now, Spring Creek's very important for the whole drainage of east of town or east of 41, let's say. That's $350,000. Where are we gonna get that from if we don't raise this millage? Because as Amy has pointed out, as Peter's pointed, as we all looked at, we pulled a million dollars off the budget last year. We can't do that this year. It's, it's bare bones budget. So I, I could support doing both, but one or the other, I think, should be done. I'm not a fan of it. It may not be popular with everybody. But again, I don't think anybody in the city of Benita Springs wants to live in a place that's not flourishing, that doesn't look good, that doesn't continue to move forward. So.
Yep, appreciate that, Greg. No, that's great. Counsel?
Peter, can I suggest, we have, we haven't voted down, we haven't even voted up or down the electricity or the communications. I think what happened was the council voted down, they, they voted down a maximum mill rate, not an increase, a maximum mill rate, a point by one. I think you made a motion, I thought you made a motion or statement that leave the mill rate where it is. mill rate where it is.
Yes, and there's been a second to that.
And can I suggest we vote on that and then go forward with the discussion of the communications and electric tax?
Let's, let's do that, okay? Roll call, please.
Can I, one, can I have one more thing, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Just real quick. Just know that if we vote this down, we cannot raise it after that.
Say again, Greg, I didn't hear you.
What I was, my, my comment was that if we vote this down, and let's say that the two other things get voted down, we, at that point, we cannot come back and revote on this maximum millage rate.
Once you set the maximum now, this is what will be reported, you cannot change...
You cannot change it without, there's a big rigamarole about, you basically have to send everybody out there. Whole new trim notices on our dime.
God. What a mess. For how long can't you raise it?
Till next year.
Oh.
Yeah.
No, I'm just saying, kinda on Amy, let's not rush into this.
Let's not vote on this.
All I'm saying is that...
You're lobbying. I know what you're doing. We're talking, we're lobbying each other, which is fine.
All I'm doing, all I'm doing is saying is that, we don't wanna cut our nose off the spider face. We can put it at something else and we can always come back and lower it because we have till September to lower it. That's all I'm saying.
Great. There's, there's a motion on the floor to keep the mill rate consistent, .8171, is that the number in? Point, .8173, there's been a second, further discussion?
So just for clarification, if we vote for this to stay the same, and then in September we have a major crisis, we can't go back?
Correct.
Maybe if I can try and explain a little bit. Historically, when you do the, when we do the budget, this is the time where the property appraiser needs to know what is the maximum number, and he puts it on what's called the trim notice and sends out the trim notice, and that has the dates of when you have the meetings. So that's a secondary thing, you have to set the tentative date of meeting. This is the day where it's capped. So what, you can always go lower, you cannot go higher than the number.
Okay.
So this is, when you're doing this, you are forfeiting your ability to go any higher than the number you have. So when the 9.173, the .10, when council voted that down, that was the number that, you know, it didn't mean you were going to commit to that at the end of your public hearings, but it gave the starting base of what would be advertised, that the residents would be on notice, this would be the highest you would be.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Great explanation. Thanks, Audrey. Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Further discussion?
Further comment, I'm just, I'm gonna vote no for purposes of keeping our options open, not, not for any other reason.
Okay, great. Thanks, Peter. Roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
No.
Councilman Duett?
No.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
No.
SIS 43.
Okay. Item C here, this is pretty routine, but Pete, if you wanna go out of order, item C is to set the tentative date for the first budget hearing.
Why don't we handle electric unless somebody wants to do something else? I'm sorry. I'll shut up.
No, 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 that's fine.
No questions, conversation.
No, that's okay. That's okay. The next item is to set the tentative date for the first budget hearing for Wednesday, September 5 at 5:05.
So moved.
Second.
So moved. And a second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman Duett?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Okay. Now, Peter, you had an item you wanted to bring up?
Well, I just thought Amy was in the middle of a conversation about the electric tax, so I'll defer to her, particularly because I'm on the phone.
Okay. Amy?
Well, I don't know if it's appropriate time to talk about it, but...
Which one is it?
It's, I mean, we can stick to the agenda or we can...
Eleven A and B.
I do feel that this would, to raise revenue, that this would have preferred methodology. And now that we voted to keep the ad valorem tax the same, this is our only chance to raise revenue. So if we don't vote these in, then what we're saying is we're gonna start out in zero. And this is totally different from, it's a different concern other than cash flow.
So I'm just, because we're hot on the topic, so to speak, I'm just gonna make a motion or just a friendly, that we move 11A up, okay, to have the discussion now.
So 11A.
And A and B. And Amy, the floor is all yours.
Before you have the floor, let me do the introduction of the ordinance.
Sure, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you. This is first reading in public hearing of the following ordinance. The first one is an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida relating to increasing the local communication services tax rate, providing for intent, providing for increased local communication services tax rate, providing for notice to the Department of Revenue, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. This is the first reading of an ordinance. The ordinance will be scheduled, if moved to go forward, on August 15, 2018, at 9:00 AM in city council chambers. The, just to give ahead of time and then go into the conversation by counsel, counsel gave me direction to prepare this draft ordinance as a shell ordinance on July 16 at your budget workshop. The amount that I increased it, consistent with the direction, was 4.49, which is still below the maximum, maximum rate. City council can increase it by statute. You still have the ability to go higher than what the statute has. The language also, I don't believe we had discussion on this part, but I kept it at the same time. In other words, when we did the last increase, the increase was from January 1, 2018. This one is January 1, 2019, and it would end December 31, 2022. So on January 1, 2023, the conversion rate would drop again to 1.70. Now, I can, I can remove that language, of course, but that was what the language was the last time you increased it. I did not extend it out further. If you want to extend it out further, we certainly can do so, but I need that direction from counsel. And I kept it with the dropping, so it's not a continuum of the taxes always there. The tax would automatically reduce at that time unless counsel directs me otherwise. This would be sent to Department of Revenue. It is a requirement for this particular ordinance. It's a little different than FPNL's ordinance. On this ordinance, we do have to have an ordinance completed and postmarked by September 1, 2018. So that means you have a second reading on August 15. I can't continue the ordinance. You could have a special meeting, I suppose, if you want to, but that, this ordinance, we're running very close on time. Otherwise, you wait a whole year. So I wanted to say that. Go ahead. I apologize.
The only thing, only question I have is, the rates that we have in these ordinances, do they reflect what amount of revenue that would be raised? Ann, could you just give us a summary there? Because I thought originally when our budget hearing, the two of them together would be 1.1. Are these...
Correct. In the budget hearing, we presented a 1% increase, which provided $700,000 in revenue. And, and that would be for a full year? So in the initial year, it'd be a partial year? So for this, if it were to pass for a partial year, and that would be increasing it by 1%? So we would, we're currently at 4%? We would go to 5%?
I have it at 4.49 plus the .12, wait, the .12, so that goes to 4.61.
Electrical franchise?
Oh, I'm sorry, no, I'm still on communication services tax.
Okay. Yes, that's currently at 3.61, would go to 4.61.
Correct.
Okay. That would generate, in a full year, $400,000, the communication services tax. So in a partial year, the first year would be $266,664.
So together, they would raise $700,000, not a million, one?
Together, in a full year, it would be 1, 1.1 million. In the partial initial year, it would be 850,000.
Okay. Thank you. We don't have to do anything, right? Just...
Yes, you do. Move the ordinance to the second and final public hearing.
So moved, move the ordinance to the second public hearing, please.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Further discussion? Mike, did you have your hand?
Yeah, I just feel this is a hidden tax and, you know, again, you know, right now we're holding an IOU of $6 million that we're gonna get back eventually, but you're asking to raise taxes on people to grow that $6 million again. And then when we do get the $6 million back, we still have their $6 million. So unless we're gonna give them a refund later, I still don't see why we're raising taxes. So I'm gonna vote no.
And it's, it's different issues, but I, I'm of the same philosophy, Mike, so I will not be supporting this.
And I would remind that we're only moving at the second reading.
I understand, we did, we did a bigger, well, maybe not a bigger issue, but we did another issue, we handled another issue this way, a statewide issue of how municipalities were gonna deal with it by not advancing it to a second reading. So I'll just point that out. So there's been a motion and a second to advance this to a second reading? Is there further discussion?
Yeah, just a question, Peter.
I'm sorry, Peter, yes, go ahead.
There's no amount in this? It's just the shell of the ordinance? Is that correct?
The ordinance does have an amount, but it's not in the title block. It's in section two, and it's a percentage. So it doesn't tell you exactly the dollar amount. As you know, people change their communications all the time, so that money is actually in flux. So we have our estimates.
All right, so that's what I'm getting at. The dollar amount would not be set today, the dollar amount would be set in September, or no, or August 15.
For, well, for the local services tax, we're on the communication services tax, I need the ordinance adopted so I can meet a September 1 deadline, and it would not go into effect until January 1, 2019.
Let me just, maybe I'm not being clear.
August 15.
Is the amount of the increase in this ordinance, is the amount in the ordinance?
No.
Okay, thank you.
The rate increase is in there.
The rate increase, the rate increase.
Oh, it is.
But the dollar amount is not.
The percentage is.
What's, what's the percent? I'm sorry. What's the percent?
It would go from 3.49, there's a 12% add-on, so it would go from a 3.61 to 4.61. It's a 1% across-the-board increase. The maximum you can do is, I believe, you're still below maximum, the maximum would be 5.1.
All right, thank you, Richard.
Great. Okay. Counsel, there's been a motion and a second to advance to a second reading, only, not to approve anything, just to advance it to a second reading. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman Duett?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
No.
Mayor Simmons?
No.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
No.
Councilman Forbes?
I'm gonna move it to the second reading, I'll say aye.
Okay, it advances four to three to a second reading. Okay, item B.
I thank you. This is another first reading. This is an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, amending ordinance number 0008, adjusting the rate of the Florida Power and Light Company non-exclusive electric utility franchise, providing for payments to the city of Benita Springs, and providing for an effective date. This is a first reading. The second reading in public hearing will be on August 15, 2018, 9:00 AM in city council chambers. This ordinance is consistent with our, I reviewed, I'm sorry. This ordinance is consistent with our city franchise, which does have certain limitations. It was something that I was requested to draft on July 16. The timeframe is slightly different. It doesn't have that September 1 deadline, but the draft ordinance does require, consistent with the franchise, 90 days. So the start date on this ordinance for what it would be, the increase, would be December 1, 2018, should counsel adjust, and counsel may adjust it to that, to a later date. And again, the ordinance already had an ending date of December 31, 2022, and I kept that date. At that point, the rate will return to 3% for the use of electricity. I believe that's it. The second reading in public hearing will be held, if it goes forward, on August 15, 2018, at 9:00 AM in city council chambers.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
I moved, move it to the next reading.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second to advance it to a second reading? Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Duett?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
No.
Mayor Simmons?
No.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
No.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Okay. Fred, that's, that's, that's a soft little voice over there, and I, and I'm close to you.
May I just make a comment?
Yes.
I really think that, I thank you for those who voted in favor of this because I think it's a bad process by which you don't advance it to the second hearing so that you have so that you have a full, full understanding of what we're voting on, and we could get feedback from our people. So thank you for advancing both of these. Even if you vote no the next time, I think it's a bad procedure not to, unless there's something horrible in the, in the public hearing, that you don't even want to consider it, that's clearly. So this is, thank you for doing that. I think it's a good procedure, and I'm asking our other council members to be persuaded by that thinking.
Thank you, Amy. Okay, we are gonna go back to item nine, which is mayor and council member items, a discussion and direction to staff regarding the replacement of mechanical equipment, replacements at residential properties. Uh, this is Councilman Forbes with an extra E in there, and this is green sheet 18080251. Fred, did you type this up, or did somebody else type it up?
I think I submitted, no, I didn't. Staff wrote that up.
All right, we, we got a typo, and it wasn't Fred's fault. Fred, take it away.
It wasn't mine, but I do lots of typos.
Yes, we got typos.
Let me say this, that what has happened is a procedure was changed, and it, and really, it's worthy of note that what, what happened was up to about, let's say about a month ago, roughly. If somebody had an air conditioner go bad, whether they were in a community where they had only a five-yard setback, or they were in one that had a seven or seven-and-a-half-foot setback, or a big setback. At that time, if you had an air conditioner that went, that blew up, that needed to be replaced, you called your air conditioner contractor. He came out, and if you and he agreed on an amount to replace it, he actually could replace it as soon as he could get the unit. If he happened to have one that size in the truck, he could do it then. He could call back to the warehouse and get one out in an hour or so, and so you were air-conditioned within, let's say, six or eight hours after he arrived, or less. What happened was, because of another ordinance that we've had on the books for quite a few years, which had to deal with new construction primarily, was what it was for, where you had to have certain clearances between, uh, the end of an air conditioner pad and your property line. You didn't want to have too many units real close together because it looked unsightly. Your, people were also concerned about looking out their window and seeing the pool equipment or the air conditioner of their neighbors. What happened was, we made this ordinance that says, oh, new stuff is what you're supposed to do. So these things didn't happen. Some cases, the air conditioner or the pool heating equipment was put in the backyard. Some, some cases, it was, um, put in the backyard with a shield and all type thing. What happened was, the procedure changed so that if you lost an air conditioner, and you were in a narrow lot-line house especially, and there's probably at least 10,000 homes in Benita, a lot of them are HOAs. Some might even be in Benita. I know that Worthington's got some, Hunter's Ridge has got some, among others. What happened was, the guy couldn't change it until he filed a permit, and they had to have a drawing and a survey and show him where the equipment was, and if it didn't meet certain setbacks, then you had to relocate it to where it did, and that relocation would cost probably minimum $2,000 to $3,000 on top of a bill you're not happy about, because a air conditioner compressor typically is going to be two, three grand, just to replace it where it's at. The reason for that, you have to move the big high vol- or heavy amperage power feeder for that air conditioner. You have to reroute and extend the air conditioning refrigerant lines of supply or the suction and line and all that, so that it really builds up. But the big thing is, the poor guy in the summertime, that's usually when air conditioners blow up, he's sitting there like Irma, where we all, we had an air conditioner work, but we didn't have the power to run it. And if you all remember what it was like, it was nasty. So what, and Arlene and Audrey, everybody's worked on this, and Audrey's reviewed all the ordinances and all that. She believes that it's within Arlene's administrative power that she could grant Pete the authority to go ahead and let things go back the way they were. Roll, roll the clock back, roll the odometer back. And then I suggested, though, that while we, even though we would do that tonight by passing a simple resolution, asking her to do it, that we fix that ordinance that was causing the trouble, so that when you're dealing with existing air conditioner installations, that we can put something in there to make it better, so you don't have to rely on an interpretation, because as we all know, interpretations change depending on who's in council and who's currently calling the interpretation. So I'm gonna make a motion that we allow Arlene to give whatever instructions she has to, to the staff, to go back to the procedure, and then allow staff to go ahead and look at changes that need to be made to make it so we don't have to have an interpretation. And I still think, even after we cover all that, we still need to have in our ordinance clearly, so it's not subject to interpretation, that in the event, even on a new installation, if somehow the configuration of the house and the lot and all that just doesn't quite allow you to do everything down to the cross the last T and dot all the I's, that Arlene, city manager, can either do it herself, or she can authorize Pete, or she can authorize Domer to work with the air conditioning contractor and the contractor building the new construction, so that there can be a slight deviation, but we don't have to come back in here to get it.
No, and Fred, I'll second that motion, and I, I just remember, you know, proud New Hampshire native, but I, and I forget exactly how it came up, or what form it came up in, but, I mean, I don't want to overdramatize this, but in some cases, this could be a life-or-death-changing, up, up north, when, if somebody loses their heater, right? Doesn't have a wood stove, doesn't have a means to keep warm, other than that oil burner or whatever. There was always situations like this where, you hate to say it, but forget what the government thinks, think about what the people need to be comfortable until you can catch up with city hall or whatever you need to do, so. I'm happy to second this. Um, and now further discussion by counsel.
I'm gonna say, you, go first. Go ahead.
No, I, I'm, I'm gonna support it wholeheartedly, and I, I agree with the, the only concern I have, I know in the last six months, we've either gotten emails or something like that with new construction down on Hickory Boulevard about people putting them too close. So I, when Fred says something about, uh, you know, new construction raises a little bit of concern. The other part of it is, you kept saying AC, AC, and then also you made a comment in your presentation about pool heaters or pool pumps and stuff like that. Is it gonna be across-the-board, or only ACs?
Well, I think the primary thrust is going to be the air conditioner, because that's the thing. They do have up north regularly in a heat wave, places where the people don't have air conditioning. They have people that die from heat strokes, and, uh, you know, we're fully air-conditioned for the most part down here. Uh, no, the, the primary thrust would be the air conditioning.
Right, because the pool pump's not life or death, and I hate to keep putting in those terms, but, yeah. Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Uh, Arlene and then Amy.
Oh, sorry. We had discussed that the air conditioning would be the only thing temporary that we would look at, but there, it, there does need to be code changes, so that it's, if that's the direction council would like to go with these existing units, because, um, I think there's some question, and I'd like John to.
Sure, and I'd like to hear John, but I want to be blunt about this. I don't want bureaucrat red tape holding up somebody that needs an AC unit.
Correct, and I think that's where we were looking at the circumstances of being for AC units, but there are other, in existing residential structures, in existing residential structures. But there, but there are other mechanical equipment, as, as Councilmember Forbes regarded, that we mentioned, but that was not what we were looking at as.
The, the only thing you may want to consider for replacement, the same way as HVAC, may be generators, because there may be situations where they are also life-and-death situations, based on what's run on there. But other than that, for the short period of time, that might be the only things you might want to consider. And then we bring back something for you to, to consider long-term, an imperative change.
Okay.
The only point I want to make is that this is a problem that was created from regulation, okay? And I'm in favor, I'm not really in favor of regulation, but I know that regulations are necessary. So I caution when we proceed to the second, uh, process here, that we make sure that we don't create another problem, because it, it makes life more difficult for people to put an air conditioner in. Uh, but I also don't want them to be discouraged of, of going for a building permit, which I think is another problem. So if 45% of the people are not even getting a bu- building permit, no matter what you put in the regulation, is not gonna help.
That's correct.
So I would, I think we, we need to proceed cautiously, is all I'm saying. But I'm in favor of both having, um, Arlene do this administratively until we can get something more substantial on the, on the books.
And just so we frame the entire argument, we'll be coming back to you. Um, we do have situations now where the side of a house has to accommodate an HVAC unit, possibly a generator, possibly a pool pump, possibly a pool heater. And depending on the type of house or location of that house, all four of those items may be located in both houses. So, uh, there, there is a question as to how we make this work logistically, and more so than, than providing more regulations for the sake of regulations.
And I don't think you could ever regulate all those special.
No, ma'am.
Happenings, because unless you have a specific thing that you're dealing with, there's no way you can put that into the wording. So that's why you need to build in some flexibility and some fallback position. But we also want everybody to get a permit so that they don't create a problem, because it's a lot harder to kick, take the air conditioner out after, if you put it in, you want to make sure that they put it in in the right spot and don't cause a problem for their neighbor.
Yes, ma'am.
So that has to be in the regulation.
And we also would want clarification, because this was originally, the concern was brought to us about existing residential structures. It was not new construction, so, we want to make sure that that's.
That is true, and, and a lot has changed since that ordinance was put into place. So there's a whole new set of circumstances I think we need to look at.
And to make, make it clear again, this is only existing replacements, not a new construction installation, because they have to follow the regulations, but if you have, I don't care whether you're on Hickory Island, or you're in Hunter's Ridge, or in Drake's neighborhood, or Mike's, if you have setbacks that are five foot, you're gonna have situations that you would not want, but you can't lay a thing on a guy that bought a house that he didn't build to spend, like, if you, if you put a unit from on the ground up on the roof, you're, you're not talking 2,000 or 3,000. You're talking big, big money to do it, and there was a deal worth, in a new construction, they didn't do it right, and a contractor ended up paying a bill to have it put up on the roof, and it was a lot of money. I mean, more money than I think it was worth, but, so the, it's, this is strictly on existing replacement of existing units. That's all.
Go for it.
Okay. Motion and a second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Just a quick, just a quick question.
Oh, sorry, Peter. Yep.
You're applying the standards that are in the code, correct? No apparent, deliterious. What's, what was in Fred's gre- green sheet?
I understand that if, if this were to be approved, it would be to apply the standard.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I understand if this were to be approved, it would be to apply the standards that have been laid out into the green sheet.
In the code. Thank you.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Clinton?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carumba?
Aye.
Councilman Dewitt?
Aye. Great, we're gonna move on to item 10 now, which is the first reading of the following zoning ordinance, and there is no public comment on this because it's a first reading.
Thank you. This is a zoning ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, considering a request by Benita Old 41 LLC to rezone approximately 3.4 more or less acres from subareas 3A commercial, 6B mixed-use, and 4 multifamily within the old US 41 corridor redevelopment master plan in the old US 41 redevelopment overlay district to a mixed-use planned development to allow up to 80 multifamily dwelling units and up to 29,000 square feet of commercial uses located at 27041, 27080, and 27092 Old 41 Road, and 2700 and 27051 Center Avenue, Benita Springs, Florida, providing for an effective date. This is a first reading of the ordinance. The ordinance will be, um, heard at its second reading on August 15, 2018, at 9:00 a.m. in city council chambers.
I move to move it forward.
Second. Okay, there's been a motion and a second to move it forward. Further discussion?
I just have a question.
Amy?
This is just a normal zoning issue that we normally would have, and we're just accelerating it because of all the things that went on before, and we would have all the presentations on our next one. Okay, thank you.
Yes, I was gonna say, I believe that to be absolutely accurate. Yes, I believe so, yeah.
There's nothing unusual in here, it was just.
No, this is your standard first reading, no public comment. We, uh, for hundreds, not hundreds of years, but since the city.
Right.
We have a tentative scheduled date, and the first reading of an ordinance, you do not have a public hearing on his zoning ord- zoning ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. Uh, okay, been a motion and a second to, uh, to advance. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Clinton?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carumba?
Aye.
Councilman Dewitt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Okay, we're now gonna move on to the item 12, first reading of the following ordinances, and public comment is allowed on these.
Yes, because they have been advertised. Uh, for the record, Audrey Vance, city attorney, I'll read the title block into the record for the first ordinance. This is an amendment to the Benita Springs Land Development Code for zoning, creating section 4-28, neighborhood meetings, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codification, scrivener's errors, inclusion in code, and an effective date. This is a first reading. It has been advertised. I reviewed the affidavit of publication on file with the city clerk, and it is legally sufficient. Uh, the ordinance will be scheduled for adoption after a second reading and public hearing on August 15, 2018, um, at 9:00 a.m., if that's the motion. Uh, you heard comments before from Mr. Donnelly, who's on our zoning board, but he gave in his private capacity and as a zoning board member. Um, and he did enter, uh, that into the record, and you have copies of his comments. Um, the only other thing is, this will be reviewed by the local planning agency on, um, August 9th for consistency with the comprehensive plan, and that is a statutory requirement.
Okay, counsel, what's your pleasure? Yes, Fred.
Uh, and I, let me say this. I'm gonna make a motion, and I'd like to broaden it unless Audrey insists that we have to make a motion each one. We're gonna have a very long, hopefully it's a tranquil meeting, but that meeting of August 15's got a lot of stuff in it, a lot of public comment. Couple of these ordinances need a little bit of smoothing out. I'm gonna propose to move these things forward, but not to August the 15th. The final reading will be on September the 5th. That gives everybody time to look at them, do what they have to do. I'm not against any of them. I'm gonna vote for them, but they need to be a little fine-tuned. But I do not want, that meeting on the 15th is gonna be long, and it's gonna be, uh, full of a lot of information, a lot of public comment, so I, I would urge everybody to do this. If we can do it with one motion, I'd like to do it that way, but otherwise, I can do it for each and every one of them.
Audrey, is, would that?
I checked with the city clerk. She hasn't advertised the ordinance yet, so as long as she advertises this, we can do the first reading today and a second reading. I don't believe there's a, um, let me just look at a statute real quick, but I don't believe that there is a, um, you can do an ordinance once a month for the advertisement, the two readings, but you can't have them too close. So I think you're fine. Let me do a quick read, but is this for all three of the ordinances?
Every, every one of them.
Okay, I wanted to ask that question for, there's.
Second.
I just have another question, though. Um, at the, whenever, whenever we have the second reading, and if there are some adjustments, like if we want to take some of the suggestions that Mr. Donnelly said, we can change that at the second reading. We don't have to discuss that now. And my, my other question is on Septe- well, she's checking. September 5th, aren't, isn't that our budget hearing? I mean, isn't that gonna be a bad meeting also? Yeah.
Yeah, but that's a real quickie.
Well.
That mean, that part will be much quicker than, we're gonna have a long meeting on the 15th, I'm telling you. And so that's why I'm trying to save us tonight.
Don't we have to go through the whole budget on this September 5th?
At 5:05, and then at 5:30, our main meeting starts, so.
Right, right.
So I mean, that's not gonna be a short meeting either.
Counsel, what's your pleasure?
And I don't feel strongly, but I, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna be here late.
Yeah, I say move it to the, the 5th.
Pardon me?
I'm with Fred.
Okay.
Okay.
We, we did want to advise you, we do have special counsel David Theriak attending for August 15. We would just work to res- if, if council would like him to be present, we'll work with rescheduling him based on the decision.
So do you think he can do it on September 5th?
He could be on the TV.
On the phone?
I don't think these are gonna be heavy-duty refinements. They may take a little time and all that. And we could even, if anybody has ideas ahead of time, we could even submit that to Audrey, and she in turn could give them to Theriak to look at before them, for the meeting, so they're all ironed out.
In my prior life, prior to Mr. Theriak, I have done plenty of ordinances where I've added alternatives, so that you could have Y, or, you know, X or Y, and then council can make that selection, so you could read it. If you're visual learners like me, you could see it spelled out. So if you want me to put in Mr. Donnelly's alternative language, I have the ability to do that if council.
Yeah, I, I'd like to see Donnelly's language in there.
As a consensus, I can revise the draft accordingly.
And, and I.
I'm in favor of one and four. I don't know about two and three. I think that needs a discussion.
And just as a quick point of clarification, I don't want to get in the way of your discussion. Uh, David Theriak will be here on the 15th for other zoning items. He will need to come back again if you want him in person, otherwise you need to be patched in by phone. So there'd be an additional meeting. And I think there also may be a public comment for concern on, on dates as well.
And if, I could just add, on the policy, uh, city council has, in the past, looked at using city hall as accommodations for neighborhood meetings, and city staff allowed it, um, much to, at that sitting council, and it was prior to, um, to Mayor Simmons being on council, because I remember, um, Councilman Spear was on it. Uh, the concern is that when you have neighborhood meetings in city building, it seems as though it's a city-endorsed speech for the developer. And the public gets a little upset by that. But, I mean, we can put it in. I just want you to know that was a policy determination by prior council, not to do that.
But we've had them before, since this, because then, when Benita Soul in here, then we come here one time for that.
Did you?
Yep, I guess, well. Tell you, prior council, where we didn't allow it.
Yeah.
Different city manager.
And I would say on Mr. Donnelly's ideas, I agree in general, but I think that even on a small project, that maybe the neighborhood, we could put wording in there that it is not a neighborhood meeting, he just simply has to have a meeting with the neighbors, so they know what's gonna happen before the bulldozer runs out there and starts digging a pit, or whatever they're doing. I think it's, but, but I agree in general with what he said.
Well, I think, well, as John put it, I think there's also here, Mr. Miller's here, and I think it may hold up his issues with, uh, down on Imperial River.
Yeah, public comment? Do, I just wanted to let counsel know, we're gonna, if we're gonna move into public comment, we're, we're gonna move into public comment.
Right, and, and I want to say that Mr. Miller was here for the density allocation, and I think we resolved all of those issues, um, at the last meeting, so I don't know if these comments are germane to his issue.
So there's been a motion, just to reiterate, to move this to September 5th. There's been a second. We've had our discussion. Now we're gonna move to public comment, and then we're gonna vote. Public comment.
Hi, Jerry Miller for the record, and there's more consideration, and this is totally at your discretion, but I just had a conflict, and Mr. Singh planned to be here on the 15th. I can't be here for the September meeting. Second honeymoon, but.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Um, but, but that said, is it possible to move that one item to the next meeting? Can you pull one of them out, or is it?
A couple thousand dollars per ad.
Oh, okay, well, never mind, so.
Which one did you want moved?
Well, I want a C to be at the, uh, August 15th, second reading, but if there's any extra expense that the city would have to incur for that, then I'm, I'm against it.
Okay.
I would just hope that that would stay on the 15th, but that's up to, up to you. Thank you, sorry.
Thank you, sir. No, that's fine. Other, is there other public comment on this issue?
Is this 13A?
This is 12A.
12.
Okay.
Could I just ask, Arlene, what are we doing on the 15th that's gonna be so onerous? Are we missing something?
Well, you're gonna have a commit, you're gonna have a report of, of, you ask early.
Arlene, you're gonna have.
Arlene, we're gonna have the Terry Street Assemblage zoning case will be at the second reading. And then we had another report item. So I think, I'm not sure... I think what the Councilman Forbes discussing is, you probably might have several public comments, public attending that meeting for public comment.
Terry Street's the only major...
You're gonna have a lot of comments on the Terry Street project. You're gonna have... That's a full-fledged zoning hearing. That's a yea or nay on our part. You're gonna have the report from Colley on outsourcing our city attorney's thing.
All right, fine. I just didn't know what we were having.
We're having a presentation on the outsourcing.
Yeah, and we're gonna have a vote on it. And there's gonna be public discussion.
Thank you. Okay, we're good. We're gonna vote. Roll call, please.
Councilman O'Flynn?
This is to continue to September fifth?
Correct.
Correct.
Thank you, Audrey.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Grumbaugh?
Aye.
Councilman Duit?
Aye, with clarification, the second reading's gonna be on the fifth.
Thank you. I was gonna do that afterwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman McCarth?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye. Excellent. No, it takes a team. I see the typos. Greg hears the language. So that's good. We all have different attributes. Okay. Now, we're moving on to item B.
Thank you. This is an amendment to Benita Springs Land Development Code for zoning, amending section four dash three two six, deviations from general zoning regulations, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codification, scrivener's errors, inclusion in code, and effective date. This is a first reading and public hearing of the ordinance. The ordinance will be held... Wait, I'm on the wrong... I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong... It's a first reading and public hearing. I did read the title block correctly. The ordinance will be advertised for September fifth, a meeting beginning at five thirty PM, if counsel goes forward.
I so move.
Second.
An emotion and a second? Further discussion?
Public comment.
And now we're gonna go to public comment on this item. Seeing none? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Grumbaugh?
Aye.
Councilman Duit?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCarth?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Okay. Item C.
And this is a final on the... This particular advertisement. This is an amendment to the Benita Springs Land Development Code, chapter four zoning, creating section four dash three seven one, allocation of density and intensity for mixed-use development, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codification, scrivener's errors, inclusion in code, and an effective date. This ordinance, it is the first reading and public hearing. There were changes to the draft. Since you last saw it, you'll see that things such as Barefoot Beach LLC, I believe, is fine. You know, provided they submit, or they... I think we clarified that everything was going to be okay with their project. I just wanna make sure. I got a head nod there from Community Development Director. And this'll be continued to September fif... Or not continued. It'll have a second hearing on September fifth.
So move.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Counsel, is there further discussion? Okay. Public comment? Seeing none? Roll call, please. Okay. Yeah, and we're talking about twelve C. Okay.
Ron Pure, I've got a question about this. Does this have anything to do with an article that I read recently in one of the... In a magazine down here? Having to do with density downtown?
I'm not Alex Trebek on Jeopardy! But we have to phrase things in the form of a statement or you need to address questions to staff.
He's about ready to retire, by the way.
Is he?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, he might. Well, if it does, I wish you'd talk it up a little bit more at the meeting tonight to give everyone a heads up on where this is going and what the impact of it could be on not only those downtown, if it is part of that situation of expanding the buildings that you folks have approved several months ago or a year ago. And the developer, I've heard or read, is back for more. More height, more density. So I'll leave it at that and leave it up to you to bring it to the fore, if you would. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Other comments from the public? Seeing none? Roll call, please.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Grumbaugh?
Aye.
Councilman Duit?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCarth?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
No. Okay, item D.
I thank you. This is first reading of the following ordinance. This is an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, amending a portion of the city of Benita Springs Comprehensive Plan as adopted by ordinance oh two, number oh two dash sixteen, as amended so as to amend the future land use map for that small-scale development amendment known as the two-six-three-eight-five Hickory Boulevard Comprehensive Plan Amendment, CPA eighteen forty-seven-two-five-four BOS, located in section twenty-five, township forty-seven south, range twenty-four east, to redesign approximately ten thousand square feet of land from general commercial to moderate-density residential to permit the development of one single-family dwelling unit, providing for transmittal to the state land planning agency, providing a conflicts clause and severability clause, and providing for an effective date and for other purposes. This is the first reading of the ordinance. The ordinance will be scheduled for adoption after a second reading and public hearing on August fifteenth at nine AM. This ordinance has gone to the local planning agency. Because it's a small-scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment, it's a little different than some of the structures you see when you do a bigger one, such as the downtown that Mr. Pure mentioned. Something like that has to have a transmittal hearing first, and then you... It comes back, and then you make changes. When you do a small-scale amendment, it goes into effect within almost the same time as any of our other ordinances, within thirty-one days, unless there's a challenge. So it's a totally different process. Councilmember Carr, since it's your particular district, you do have constituents that do want a more residential of Little Hickory Island. And this would go more towards residential, single-family, as opposed to commercial uses.
I so move.
I second it.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Counsel, is there further discussion? Public comment? Seeing none? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Grumbaugh?
Aye.
Councilman Duit?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCarth?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Okay, let's see. Audrey, where are we? We're on item thirteen. I guess that is thirteen A, right?
Yes. Yes. And this is another ordinance. And let me go through. So I have reviewed the title block, and it is legally sufficient and on file with the city clerk for the next three ordinances. The first ordinance is an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, providing for the recovery of professional fees and costs for the review of certain enumerated development applications and procedures stare for, providing for fixed fees for the review of certain enumerated development applications, providing for payment of cost recovery and fixed fees, providing conflicts, providing a severability clause, and providing for an effective date. To explain the ordinance to City Council, City Council adopted Land Development Code, section two-five-seven-one, which was its fee structure, last November. And when it adopted it, it included a cost recovery provision. So this was something brand-new to the city. And what we do is, because we're hiring and we're outsourcing more and more, if there was specialized services, the development application would end up paying the cost of those specialized reviews. So that could be specialized engineers. It could certainly be outside special counsel. And that's a process. When we adopted the fee schedule, we didn't know that there was also a clarifying ordinance to also assist in the development application process. And that's what you have here, is a draft ordinance that would explain and set up a process. So it really helps administratively operate the ordinance. And if people say, well, how... What gives you the authority to do this for this part of it? This is the meat that has that. Jackie Gensen, who has worked on this ordinance, can explain it further, if you have any questions.
Okay. Counsel?
So move.
Second.
So move.
Okay. There's been a motion and a second. Further discussion? Greg?
Just a quick question. When we talk about cost recovery, does that money now go into the general fund? Or does that go into that building fund?
Not the building fund.
All right, that's all my questions. You don't have to explain, Jackie, if that's the answer.
Good evening, mayor and counsel. For the record, Jack Wilkensen. The funds, when they're coming... When they come into our office, it goes into an escrow deposit, if you will. And then, as I get invoices for certain cases, I go ahead and deduct them and submit those... That information to finance. And then they go ahead and pay out those accounts.
Okay.
And then the balance of any unused escrow is then returned.
Correct. Once the case is closed out.
Right. And if, you know, we do not allow the final approvals until the final payments are made.
Great. Counsel, is there any other questions? Public comment is allowed? Any public comment on thirteen A? Seeing none? Roll call, please.
Councilman Duit?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCarth?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Grumbaugh?
Aye.
Thirteen B, tracking right along.
Thank you. The next three items are all flood-related. I'm gonna read the title block of the first ordinance. This is an ordinance repealing and replacing Benita Springs Code, sections twenty-four dash one through twenty-four dash one fourteen, the flood ordinance, to adopt the flood hazard reduction ordinance, sections twenty-four dash one through twenty-four dash one fourteen, designating a floodplain administrator, adopt procedures and criteria for development in flood hazard areas and for other purposes, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codification, and scrivener's errors, modifications that may arise from consideration at public hearing, and an effective date. This is the second reading and final ordinance adoption. We need to make these changes to make our ordinance consistent with the NFIP requirements, to stay within the insurance program, which I hope got reauthorized by Congress. I haven't checked in the last week of the news on that issue. This is part of your strategic plan, which is to improve stormwater management. If you have questions or specifics as to the provisions, I'll be happy to try to explain it. Or I have Aida Williams here, who is our certified floodplain manager. And she's a building inspector with Community Development.
And we'd also like to address the item number one right after that as well, because that is a segment that would have to be entered into the ordinance.
Look at it hiding right down there. Okay. That's... And Aida, I don't know. Would you like to... You're here. We'd love to have you say hello, or probably more than hello. But welcome.
Good evening, Aida Williams, for the record. We've kind of done PowerPoint. We've had some small conversations. So I'm more here to clarify any questions or concerns.
Sure. No, absolutely. Counsel, do we have questions? Amy? Oh, I apologize. Yeah, there's been a motion and a second.
There will be. Motion to approve?
Okay. Yeah, motion to approve and a second. Okay? Further discussion? Thank you.
Could you just explain why you chose the thirty points variation here?
Well, we have three different options prepared. We have the third, as far as the non-conversion agreement goes, thirty, sixty, ninety. The ninety would be a challenge, because this is... That would put a mandatory yearly inspection on all new properties located in flood zones. Sixty gives us an option of, not a mandatory inspection. So that's, I think, the best way to maximize our points. Thirty, simply, they acknowledge the regulations, but there's no mention of any type of inspections. 30, simply, they acknowledge the regulations, but there's no mention of any type of inspections. By giving us an option for saying inspections with, with a proper notice, that can help code enforcement with our citations and follow up with the program.
But staff is recommending the 30% as a step, as a step one. We had in there the, the conversion with just, I mean, sorry, the 30 points was the conversion.
But the only time you can do an inspection, if there's a violation of some sort.
It would be.
Yeah. But you, you think we could do this, this go around, and maybe next time, we'll see how it works and go up to the next one? Is that?
30 points, I think, for an introductory.
Is very good.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And we had, we had looked, because we were recovering from Hurricane Irma and the many inspections that's happened with folks with FEMA, we were looking at this as a step one. We can always reevaluate that and bring that back.
Thank you.
Next step.
Correct. Now, the form itself is not something that has to be cited in the ordinance. The ordinance simply says that we have, that we're going to ask for the form. It's more of an administrative policy for which one we choose.
Where, right, where in the ordinance does it talk about that? If you could help me find it, because if we do need to make adoptions to the form or to the ordinance, I need to read that.
There's no adaption to the ordinance.
Okay, so the ordinance is not changing. It's a policy call that goes through.
Correct.
Thanks.
Okay. Council, any other questions?
I'm good.
Fred? You're speechless. My goodness. Wow. Okay. Dynamite, thank you very much. And now, we're going to allow for some public comment. I see Kathy back there, waiting patiently. Lower the microphone, please, young lady. There you go.
Yes, for the record, Kathy McGrath. I might need some confirmation of this from either Arlene or Audrey. Does this have anything to do with the community rating system? All right, that's what I want to bring up. As you all know, I live on the river, my elevation is 10 feet, I have flood insurance. And every year, I have benefited because of certain requirements that's required, and I don't know who does it, I've always given Arlene credit, which gives me, and everyone who has flood insurance, a discount. Now, for last year, my discount was $8,000. I still had to pay over $3,000, but thank goodness that the city has wonderful staff that complies with these things, that keeps giving us a higher rating so that we pay less. And anyone who has flood insurance, be sure you look at your policy, and you'll see it right there. I saw the $8,000. That's the thing I wanted to bring up. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And I would be happy to claim credit for your last year, but I'd like to introduce Ms. Williams again, because she will be taking the lead on our CRS.
And Kathy, you know me, I got to have a little fun with you. God bless those required requirements, right?
Required requirements. Did I lose something?
No, you said, you said that, so that's great.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Now, the required requirements are the best, you know?
I'll second that. Thank you.
I sell, every year, I remind people with the flood insurance, because I bet it, well, I would hope everyone would look at their policy. Thanks.
Thanks a lot, Kathy. Ron, welcome.
Thank you. I misspoke earlier. Trebek is not retiring soon. He's, his contract is up for renewal in about two years.
Ooh, negotiation time.
The same as yours.
Negotiation time, right? Trebek and I are up at the same time, it sounds like. All right. I'll keep that in mind.
Okay. Both winning personalities, by the way. I have some questions about this. Is this what I was groping for earlier in the, in the day tonight, when we first sat? And that was about remarks about the South Florida Water Management District? And I see that, is there already a floodplain administrator on our payroll? Or is that someone that is going to be hired as part of this?
It's not a new hire. We, we've always had, somebody had to be a floodplain administrator, and we've always had somebody at staff designated to be one.
Thank you. Now, is, do we get any funding at all from outside sources for the handling of this particular situation? Is this what the council has addressed over the many months since Irma, with respect to trying to contain and resolve those problems that have come up over the years, every time we have a?
This is the ordinance that we have had in the books before the city incorporated, after the city incorporated, and they need occasional changes to the ordinance. This is the ordinance that keeps, and when we use community rating system, that's what keeps your flood insurance. So, if you have flood insurance, you can't get it if we don't have an ordinance, or it will go up cost, you know, it will become a problem, paid. This is a requirement in order to be able to have flood insurance. And if you want to see people angry, it's if the insurance companies are not able to issue insurance, because then the closings cannot occur, and people cannot buy homes.
Yeah. Now, we were experiencing in the neighborhood as well. But again, is it all part of that overall package that was talked about many months ago after Irma?
No.
What is that? Would you tell me, so I can follow that in the future?
That's a separate subject.
What is it?
Focus on that. We, we're doing a stormwater management plan.
Yes.
And that's where we retained different people, different sources, like I believe Aptum is doing some. And that's a totally different subject matter than what we're on.
Okay. Is that going to appear on any agendas soon?
Ron, I'm going to just say this is your last question, because this is public comment time, not public question time.
And I appreciate that. I just want to be brought up to the table.
Last question.
Because the newspapers don't bring us up to the table.
No, I understand. Right, I understand.
I can happily say I'm not the staff member that will know that answer.
All right. I'll be in touch with some.
Wonderful. Thank you, Ron.
Thanks so much, and I'll miss you, Audrey.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll give you a correct answer for 200 bucks on that one. How's that? Dynamite. Other members of the public that would like to speak?
It raises taxes too much.
Okay. Seeing none, Audrey Vance, take it away, wherever we are.
City Council, we're asking, staff is asking that you adopt this ordinance at this time. We'll talk about conversion again in a few seconds.
Okay. And there's been a motion on the floor, there's been seconded. Council, was there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
This is just for both the motion and number one, correct?
Motion for the flood ordinance.
And not number one also? Can we take them both as one motion, or you want them as separate?
I would prefer to have separate motions, because I, it's foreseeable that you could have different discussions on it.
So, council?
There's no need for the ordinance verbiage to change, so there's no reason why it can't be discussed as a second item.
My motion was for?
For 13B?
Yep.
13B alone, and there's been a second for 13B. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Aye. Wonderful. Now, 13B1.
So moved.
Second.
And this is for the 30 points?
Yes.
30 points.
Okay. There's been a motion and a second for 13B1. Council, is there further discussion? Okay, public comment. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman Duett?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Audrey, 13C, I think we're here.
Hey, excellent. So, this is a second reading and public hearing of the following ordinance, and it is amending the building code. I have reviewed the affidavit of publication on file with the city clerk, and it is legally sufficient. This is an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs relating to Building and Construction Code, adopting local technical amendments to the Florida Building Code, adding definitions for determining repetitive loss, substantial damage, and substantial improvement, including a fiscal impact statement, providing for conflict severability, codification, inclusion in code, scrivener's errors, and effective date. There's a typo as far as the August 1 language in there, as well as the, looks like the green sheet had some issues that I was not aware of. Uh-huh. But it's still legally sufficient as far as, today is August 1, and we're going through on August 1. These are the Jack and Jill portion related to the flood ordinance, and it makes the minimum changes to the building code. It's in a separate chapter than 10. This is our building code section, and it's just to provide consistency of the two ordinances. On June 6, you heard a presentation from Aida Williams, who, again, you talked to today, and you authorized us to go forward with both ordinances. Staff is requesting that you adopt this ordinance today.
Okay.
So moved.
So moved. I'll second that. There's been a motion and a second. Council, discussion? Public comment. Okay, seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman Duett?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Okay. Audrey, anything else, as if that weren't enough, but just making sure.
I do have something for the city attorney report.
Okay.
I'll wait till after public comment.
Okay, wonderful. Public comment on any old thing. Doesn't have to be for these first and second readings and side readings.
I'll try to be brief, Kathy McGrath.
The required requirements.
Number one, I forgot, and Sean Gibbons was here from Community Development when I was talking about Film Fifth. We want to welcome him, because he's going to be another one of Antonio's supporting cast, so thanks to.
Is that right?
Yeah, yes, he is.
Wonderful.
Secondly, Audrey, is there any way we can persuade you to stay? I didn't think so. Well, that's sad.
I tried.
That's sad. That's sad. The third thing, I don't know if everyone's aware, because it affects me, but Mr. Wilkinson at the Tax Assessor's Office, you know, if you've had damaged, if your house was not repaired by January 1st, let them know, because you can get a tax break. And let's face it, my house still isn't repaired. So, I took all the information up, but I'm, for the record, the person in his office is handling it, her name is Tabitha Hip, H-I-P-P. Her phone number is 239-533-6125, or you can email at taxroll@lee-pa.org. And if you can prove it, you know, and the trim noses are going out soon, so the clock is ticking on that.
What was that name again?
Her name is Tabitha, T-A-B-A-T-H-A, and her last name is Hip, H-I-P-P. Did you get the number and everything, Fred? Because I can give it to you later.
Remember Fred, who was on that show Bewitched? Tabitha?
Yes.
Yeah, she twitched her nose, or something like that. And the last thing I want to mention is the sad loss of our deputy last week. And I understand there is going to be another fundraiser, but what I want to bring up, the outpouring, like, when they called for blood, and he had a rare OR negative, which is the universal, but they needed blood from everything, and the people lined up. And I think most of you know, I'm a platelet donor. You can donate platelets every two weeks. They're replenished in seven, two hours. And they're desperately needed for trauma, transplant, and chemo people. So, I spend two hours at the blood thing every two weeks. And I just heard yesterday that usually, they have a backlog of 42 units. They were down to five. So, you know, I know, and it takes a lot of blood donations to make one unit of platelets, so, but even that helps. If you can't take time and don't qualify, at least donate blood once in a while. And I believe that's it.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Kathy. Other members of the public that would like to speak?
I have to do.
That's great, Bonnie. Welcome.
No, it's a big, you want to call it hands, hats off, whatever. Coming out of my Shangri-La Road tonight, I looked to my right going north, traffic was bumper to bumper in two lanes because of a fatal accident where Lime Tree meets 41. So, I waited, one change of the light, I came out, and within, it took me exactly eight and a half minutes to come all the way down, come around the rotary, and come down. And I said, hallelujah, I wished our public servants could see this. People, it was amazing. Of course, they cut down Terry, they could get that way, but everybody else was sent down Old 41. But the roundabouts do work. It was fabulous. So, hats off.
Wonderful. Thank you, Bonnie. Other members of the public? Ron Pure is in the house. I see him coming. With those dark glasses, Ron.
And thank you so much for this, too, by the way. I don't make as many meetings as I used to, but I'm backlog with my comments, I guess. I just want to, you'll be discussing the Spring Creek business coming up soon here. And I just want to add to that, perhaps, giving some thought to the West Coast Inland Navigation District, who, by the way, had eight or 10 years ago committed money to the Spring Creek project under the former management supervisor over there. That's, that's been lost over the years, as you know. But maybe we could get on their schedule, too, so that the job of Spring Creek and the channels and so on could be kept open in perpetuity by having them oversee the situation, as I think they do parts of the Estero Bay area around Hickory Boulevard. So, I hope you'll throw that in the mix of your thinking on how to handle it in the future, after you get the work done ASAP. And that's about it. And I also heard someone say, well, we're back at zero with the budget if we keep the bill rate frozen. I think that was what you folks voted on tonight, keeping it frozen. Again, as you had pointed out yourself, Mayor, someone else, is that if it's frozen, there is still more money coming in the door based on the increase in our valuation of the city overall. So, it's not like you're starting from scratch. And I, I think the idea of a, of a credit line is a really very, very good one. I hope other organizations will do the same kind of research and, and decide to go in the same direction. One of them would be the fire district, which we've been on, on their case for many years to adopt it. Because essentially, what you can do with that is free up money that is by policy, but you can always change a policy, kept in a reserve account. And you wouldn't have to keep that much in a reserve account, for instance, covering salaries for 90-day or 120-day period. I could see that happening in a, in an area or community without our residential credit line. We have, I'm sure, the residents of the community have a real good one, and I think most of us pay our tax bills and so on in, on time, et cetera. So, that could conceivably open the door to reducing the amount that's kept aside for the salary count, for example. But I think the credit line is a good, a good gig, and I hope you'll pursue that as well in the future. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you, Ron. Thank you for your input. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the city attorney's report. Audrey?
Thank you, Council. Recently, I informed you of a newly filed lawsuit against the city that's entitled BG Mine LLC versus City of Benita Springs, Lee County Circuit Court Case Number 18CA-03465. Pursuant to Florida Statute Section 286.011 Subsection 8, I'm advising City Council that Mr. Theriak and I desire advice concerning the litigation, and am requesting that the City Council convene in a closed attorney-client session to discuss the litigation and settlement strategies. I'm requesting that the session be scheduled for Wednesday, August 15, 2018, at 1:00 p.m., which is before your City Council meeting on that date. If this is acceptable, the city clerk will give reasonable public notice of the time and date of the attorney-client session as required by statute. I believe all of you have been contacted by my legal assistant, Leah Fontanaz. I know she did not hear back from Council members Corumba and Carr, but I do hope you can make it, because this is important.
You were just saying, I thought she said the 14th.
No, August.
I thought the email.
I have August 14th at 1.
I'm sorry, August 14th at 1.
Yeah, it's not before our meeting.
Okay.
So, means at 9:00 on the 14th.
Wrong day, Tuesday.
Yeah, yeah. No, I did respond, and I am available on the 14th at 1, not the 15th at 1. Because we're going to be in our, on our council meeting, I think.
The 14th is great. Yes, you're right. That's a daytime meeting.
Are we going to order lunch or something?
Yes. I apologize. Okay. So, it's not after your meeting, it's before your meeting, so that'd be the August 14th. Thank you for that correction.
The 14th at 1. Okay, great. Is that it?
I just would like you to agree to do so.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. Good.
Yes. Okay. City managers' report. Arlene?
Yes, I'd like to ask Community Development, Mike Fegan, to come forward. At the last meeting, we provided some information regarding the redevelopment of golf courses, and we wanted to, at a very high level, get some direction from Council on how we see forward in the drafting of the ordinance, discussions on where we see the redevelopment happening.
Okay, great. Rock and roll, Mike Fegan, welcome.
Thank you. I'll be signing autographs afterwards.
All right, excellent. For those that don't know, he's quite the drummer, I understand, but while he's getting set up here, I'll be the sideshow while he's getting ready.
Rumor has it.
Rumor has it? He knows how to?
Maybe he can lead us in drum solo.
Yeah, drum solo. Yeah.
Not a problem.
Drum circle.
Drum circle, okay.
Happy to help any way I can as staff. Mike Fegan, Community Development, for the record, as we discussed at the last meeting, you provided some documentation with regards to golf course redevelopments. This is becoming an increasingly important topic, especially in Florida, where we are rather saturated with golf courses all the way through the entire state. One of the things that our research has shown is that in the last 10 years, over 800 golf courses nationwide have closed, while only 150 new ones have opened. So, the question has sort of morphed into, will you have these golf courses? They take up a rather significant amount of space. What do you do with them? So, one of the staff members that we have, who has been sort of spearheading the research in this area, is Ms. Mary Zizo. You may recognize, you want to stand up for a second? You may recognize, Mary, she actually started off as an intern in Audrey's department, so we're happy to have her on board in Community Development as a planner. And she's been doing a lot of really good research into this golf course redevelopment issue. So, I got a-
Thank you. She's making you look good.
She really is, yes. So, I got a quick little presentation for you, and then, there are two areas in which staff is requesting direction on.
Okay.
So, the first thing is that within Benita Springs specifically, we have 13 golf clubs. There are more courses, because we have several developments that have several courses, but there are 13 overall golf clubs within the city. And 12 out of 13 of those are located within planned developments. So, essentially, for those, we, we have a rough idea of what the standards would be. The standards are relatively already set, for the most part, because of the planned development ordinance that governs the entire projects. We do have one, it's the Benita Golf and Country Club, that is conventionally zoned. And we know this, this course has come up for multiple reasons in the past. But regardless, we are not discounting the other 12 in terms of our research, you know, in terms of making a uniform golf course redevelopment code that would cover all the golf clubs within the city. In terms of what we have right now, it, it really isn't much. There's a footnote within the residential use regulations table that says that redevelopment residential use regulations table that says that redevelopment of an existing-only golf course with residential buildings requires planned development zoning. Outside of that, which means you have the planned development section of the current land development code that would apply, outside of that, there isn't anything specific to golf course development, or golf course redevelopment, should I say. So, you know, your standard buffering would apply, densities, obviously, which are set by the comp plan, they could ask for a multitude of uses under the planned development process. What we've seen in our research is that municipalities have tended to treat golf course redevelopment a little bit differently. You have surrounding neighborhoods with pretty much all these golf courses, and mainly surrounding single-family residential in the majority of them. And a lot of them bought into that area because they wanted a golf course view, or they wanted to have an open space view. There seems to be consideration amongst the ordinances that we presented to you to do what you can to try and preserve views like that. So creating perhaps additional buffer standards as part of the new regulation to essentially preserve, sort of play on words there, the view for the existing neighborhoods and provide them consideration when you do these types of redevelopments. So that sort of dovetails into one of the areas that we are requesting direction from tonight, and that is the level of development in which council would be comfortable with for these golf courses. And what I mean by level of development, you essentially have three choices. No development, they stay as golf courses, or they become open space, parks, trails, what have you. Limited development, in other words, you allow development up to a certain percentage, which I believe you have a couple ordinances in your packet that have capped it at, say, 50%, so you can develop up to 50% of it, the other 50% must stay open space, and a considerable amount of that open space must be in the form of a buffer along the existing residential. Or you can allow complete redevelopment and have a whole host of uses that could potentially be done. So that's one area that staff is requesting direction on in terms of just how intense are you looking to go. The reason why staff is requesting direction on that is because these are three very different options, and they take us down three very different paths of research. So in order to bring back an ordinance that is desirable and productive, both with your time and ours, we are requesting some direction on what your preference would be as a council. No development, limited development, cap it at a certain percentage, and we could talk about specifics of percentages at a later date, we just need a good starting point from you, or complete redevelopment. And tying into that would be the style of regulation that you want to be the control mechanism overall. Are you looking for perhaps a golf course overlay district, which is what Titusville did in your attached ordinance? Are you looking for something similar to what Collier County did, which is provide supplementary regulations within the land development code? Tamarack did something a little unique, where they went and tackled the actual use groups that make up the uses within a zoning table. While I don't want to show too much bias, that would be a very difficult one to implement here within the city of Bonita Springs. Or do we want to sort of edit or amend the existing planned development regulations specific for golf course redevelopment? Obviously, with whichever way is chosen, in either of those two areas, you're going to have premiums placed on certain attributes, such as open space, stormwater management, making sure you have public outreach to address concerns, buffers, height, views, access, maintaining character of these existing neighborhoods, density, environmental concerns. Obviously, with whichever direction you give us tonight, we're going to focus on those areas, of course. And then I wanted to end by giving you an example of, this is an example of a proposed golf course redevelopment project. It's in Amherst, which is just outside of Buffalo in New York State. And this was a proposal for a full-on redevelopment of the entire golf course. It was shot down pretty heavily, but this is an example of what that would look like as far as a plan would go. They had a whole host of residential and commercial uses mixed in there, and it did not go over very well. So there are no other municipality that is actively trying to pursue golf course redevelopment regulations. Another example is out in California. This is El Dorado. This one was also shot down due to the intensity that they felt was not appropriate, given the surrounding area. When you look at Bonita Springs specifically, we are largely suburban. So while I'm not trying to influence your decision in any way, obviously, you know, compatibility and understanding what you have to work with and what's there right now sort of plays apart from the staff perspective as far as what could really work and what's more adaptable. Collier County has really been the spearhead jurisdiction on golf course conversions, which is why we attach their ordinance as well. They're going to be presenting a lecture at the American Planning Association Conference in September for this subject specifically. I will be attending. I want to try and absorb as much as I can of what they did. I feel regardless of what you choose tonight, it's going to be very fruitful for staff to hear that side of it and get a better understanding of how to craft this ordinance for you so that we can bring back the best product possible. So to sort of recap, and the memorandum attached to your packet did a good job of this, the level of development is one of the areas we're looking for direction from you. No development, in other words, leave as a golf course, open space, park space, some redevelopment up to a certain percentage, or full-scale redevelopment is one area. And then the second area is how to tackle it within the code itself. Create an overlay district like we have for our downtown, provide supplementary regulations in the code, tackle the planned development process. So these are just some areas that we're requesting additional clarification from you on.
Great, thanks, Mike. I have a question.
Yes.
Only bec- well, not only because, but I am familiar with La Cita Golf Course in Titusville, Florida.
Mm-hmm.
So I see your map here, but what did they ultimately decide to do?
Titusville, Titusville went with creating an overlay, and they got very specific with it, similar to what we did downtown. They even went as far as to provide a specific list of uses permitted in a golf course overlay, and a prohibited list of uses in a golf course overlay. As far as intensity goes, they did allow a commercial and residential mix. They're okay with that, it's in their code, but they capped it at 10% commercial. So no more than 10% of the intensity of your overall project can be commercial. And they focused on commercial uses that would serve a neighborhood, as opposed to bringing in a bunch of outside traffic into this suburban-style area. So that was some of the controls that they instituted. They also instituted a very significant buffer around the existing residential areas in the golf courses, 75 feet wide. So you have a 75-foot vegetation buffer essentially between existing residential and what would be the redevelopment area, to help preserve the view, the environmental view, the preserve view, the conservation view, if you will. One of the things they did that was very unique is that if the part of the redevelopment project were to include tree-lined trails or a linear park that could be used by the neighborhoods, the buffer could be reduced down to 50 feet. So they sort of put a premium on adding some type of public benefit to the redevelopment, and incentivized, you'll get more developable space, because it will lessen your buffer, but as a result, you're going to give us linear trails, you're going to give us parks, you're going to make this more of a community, you're going to assimilate into the community.
Right.
That's the way Titusville tended to tackle it.
So dumb, dumb question, but I'm full of them, tonight especially. They decided to shut down the entire golf, I mean, the greens are-
Well, no, no, what I mean is, if a golf course were to go out of business, if a golf course were to become defunct, such as Bonita Golf and Country Club, and when you're looking at Bonita Springs in terms of what's left to develop, taking DRGR out of the picture, you're looking largely at infill. And one of the areas that has come up in multiple areas of the city so far has to do with what to do with these golf courses. And again, the trend right now nationwide is that a lot of these golf courses are closing. Not saying that's going to happen within the city of Bonita, obviously, but it's a very real trend that we are seeing, and we are seeing it in Florida. So this is sort of an effort to prepare for that.
Sure, sure. Fred?
Well, first of all, I think in the statistics that you threw out, that a good deal of those golf courses are ones where the people that live around it do not own the golf course. Most, a lot of, most of the ones in Bonita, Hunter's Ridge, Worthington, Palmera, the membership owns the golf course.
That's correct.
Therefore, it's much more unlikely that that kind of a golf course goes out of business, and one where you have a public golf course that they have homes built around, which is kind of what we, we do have a few of those. I think one of them might be a modular home golf course, where there's modular factory homes on that golf course. That might be one, I don't know. Secondly, my personal view is, in Bonita, I think I would prefer some development, the percentage is subject to debate, and I think as part of what would be acceptable buffering, we should allow for putting in a large water retention, huge water retention holding reservoir, possibly wetlands, but that creates a natural big separation. I don't really think, personally, I would just assume limited to residential, but you could have in-residential, and a lot of golf course communities will have the two-story carriage homes, as they call it, things like that, to help pick up the density. That's just my point of view, but whatever. But I don't think it's as big a problem as the numbers that you're talking about for Bonita, because I don't see any of these homeowner communities going belly-up bankrupt.
Mary Zizo, for the record, mayor, in reference to your question.
Yes.
Titusville never passed this ordinance, so while they did a very extensive analysis on La Cita with their buffer analysis, it never passed, and so they just had to go under a planned development at the time, and gave them those regulations.
Because I knew, yeah, and the mayor retired after a long, I just remember not hearing anything about it, interestingly enough, not that I'm, you know, completely plugged in with Titusville, but once upon a time I was, as a lad. That's where the Simmonses used to snowbird to, and watched Columbia 1 and 2 go up, so I'm dating myself, back in the early 80s. And I just, Lee Trevino, and he was a pro golfer back then, I think he still does the senior circuit, this was one of his developments, and this was a, I don't want to say cutting edge, but it was a big deal. So that's why I was very curious as to what they're doing, or not doing, it sounds like.
They've done an excellent job researching, but I, they have a very lengthy list of regulations, and it just hasn't passed so far.
Okay, okay, dynamite. Counsel, Greg?
I just got a question for Mike, and kind of off of what Fred's saying. What, when you were talking about this ordinance, or whatever we decide to do, will it cover, like the Bonita Bays, the Worthingtons, those types of planned developments also?
That's the goal. The goal is to make it cover golf courses throughout the entire city.
Okay. And we have that right to say, like Fred's saying, their membership owns, if the planned development decides to, all right, we're going to shut the first nine down, make an executive course, and put some townhomes in there, they would still fall underneath, even though they're a planned development already, with their own set of regulations?
They could. Now, they very well could. Now, the good news, though, is with these planned developments that you're referencing, a lot of them already have the densities that are set, the open space calculations that are set as in the existing planned developments, and a lot of these planned developments use their golf courses to meet their open space requirement. So one of the things that we would want to tweak, probably regardless, and it's one of the reasons why the preference would be to try and include all of the golf courses, even the ones that are within planned developments, is to make sure that they can't double-dip, per se, for their open space.
Right.
That the open space that's used for the entire project, and how much of the golf course is used to meet that requirement, you cannot then sacrifice that for the sake of a new project. And that would need to come in, that could be covered under a golf course redevelopment ordinance.
DRIs also?
Well, let me just say, Peter, if I might.
Did you say Audrey?
Just taking the words out of Audrey's mouth, literally. If we have DRIs in effect, I'm assuming before we start jumping into DRIs, we're going to get outside some appropriate legal advice with respect to that.
Absolutely. Yes.
Mike, I'm in favor of sort of a moderate position. I wouldn't want to say you can't develop it, because there are golf courses that just can't be maintained, so that's a real problem. And I think one of them, one of our council people live in one where they had a problem. But my second one is, I don't quite understand the choices that you are suggesting here for how we would do this. Do you have a, like, an overlay district? Is that better than supplemental regulations? Is that easier to accomplish, or should we just stick with planned developments? I don't see, could you do, you could accomplish the same thing with any of these?
You could accomplish the same thing with A, B, and D.
Yeah.
C becomes a bit problematic, because you're tackling a very specific section of the code, and even within that, you're probably going to want to add some supplementary regulations anyway. The A and B essentially allow you to be, well, A, B, and D, in my professional opinion, A and B allow you to get the most specific with it, in the sense that we'd be creating these from scratch. We already have a planned development section in the code, so essentially, if you went with that, it would be an addition to that existing section. And then just sort of tweak it maybe specifically for golf course conversion applications, or maybe you rezone to a golf course planned development specifically, or something like that.
That was my second question. We could still require that they have a planned development to do it, but we would have it within the regulations.
Yes.
The overlay district would also be consistent with the fact that you have a Bonita Beach Road overlay district, you have the 041. It kind of clearly, transparently shows that overlay in the regulations are in one section there.
And when I was reviewing your things, there were commentary from all of them that were appealing to me, but we could just take those things that we like and introduce them with every mechanism. But I think, like, one of the things that were this, the buffer zones, some golf courses are rather narrow, so if you had a golfer's, you know, if you had a very extensive buffer zone, you would essentially not allow them to convert, because they couldn't put the street in and do the, I mean, it'd just be ridiculous.
Sure, yeah, I mean, you see that in some of these, that if your fairway is less than a certain footage across, you'd, guess what, that's open space, you're not developing that section.
Correct. And then you have to figure out how to get from one hole to the other from there, so it's, it could create a problem. Well, maybe that's the best solution, but there are a lot of technicalities here that would have to be worked out, but I'm for a sort of a moderate approach here. I definitely think we need regulations, because I do think that some of these golf courses are not going to survive more than we want, so we need to move on this.
Counsel, Fred?
I don't think overlay is going to work, because the variation between golf courses and when the communities were made into an HOA or whatever, I think you're better off to do it with regulations and all that. That's my own. But, and I'm not, I'm not lobbying that HOAs would be excluded from this, I'm just saying that it's much more unlikely if the membership owns a golf course, that are paying the dues and all that, that you're going to see it convert. It's only where you have the members having the right to play on a golf course, but they don't own it. Some other entity owns that.
Sure.
Peter, can I make a suggestion, and I think somewhat consistent with what Fred previously said, but just to answer the questions that are on this memo from Mike and Mary?
Yes, Peter, please.
Yes. The first one, he has three options. One is no redevelopment. I'm assuming that's got significant Burt Harris issues with it. If it doesn't, I'd be for that, but I can't believe it doesn't have significant Burt Harris issues. So assuming that, I'd be for B, which is some redevelopment up to a certain percentage. And then number two, it's something in a neighborhood of a combination of B, which is supplementary regulations, together with planned development. That's my two cents.
No, that's great.
And the last thing, the last thing I would add is, I would hope sooner rather than later, we would have citizen input with respect to this.
Yes, no, I, that's on my mind as well, very much so. And Peter, you and I have both rep, well, have both represented that area, currently, obviously, still do. There's some strong feelings and strong opinions over there in Bonita Golf and Country Club, and we would just, we would just ask our friends, please, 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 let us know your thoughts. I am of the opinion as well to go with, you know, the limited development with water, retention, storage, whatever we want to call it. A complete redevelopment, I just, I don't think it's practical, I don't think it's feasible, I don't think it's realistic. And to be honest, I'll just be blunt, I think it's going to enrage the neighbors. I could be crazy, I like, I haven't heard from one person, but I'm just going to-
Well, there, well, I have, and there are a lot of very responsible people out there with expectations that are sensible, and-
Yes.
In my mind, consistent with, consistent with taking considerations and Burt Harris, I'd like to, you know, properly hear them out and see that the benefit of what they bargained for over so many years comes into fruition, consistent with not crossing a line as they're taking.
No, 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 absolutely. And Mike, what's your suggested timeframe on this? The only reason I say that is, I tend to think we have a consensus, maybe we don't, on the middle option, limited development, but I want to make sure that this gets exposure, that people are back, like Ben Hirschensohn and others, that certainly knows how to round up people and hear their thoughts. So what's your timeframe? Because, and I know you're not doing this intentionally, but we're always accused of doing things like this, and they're dead in the bowels of summer when nobody's here, and I absolutely want to blow that into oblivion, that we're not doing that, and push this back as far as we can into season. I want, I want it to come back during season, so we can have the proper input from the citizens. How's that sit with you?
You do have a moratorium that expires in December for golf course redevelopment. Season, to me, season is January through April. It may require a potential extension of the moratorium in that case.
Okay. I'd be, why don't I make that motion, to extend the moratorium?
I would like to.
Well, I'll just put it to you this way. I don't, I've said it, I want maximum participation on this, and when people are back.
Yeah, I think one way to do that, Pete, is to have Mike and, you know, that the community development group, together with Arlene, together with Theriak, take a look at, you know, a 1B, come up with ideas, so that we have something constructive to talk to our good friends and neighbors over there. And not get out ahead of them, but have a little more meat on the bones here.
Right. No, that's, that sounds great.
Yes.
Fred?
Yeah, well, I think one thing we ought to do beside doing, adding in that water, reservoirs, and wetlands can be considered a buffer. The other thing that I think we ought to advocate, and that is, if you can have the multimodal trails throughout this thing, that's a real plus, because all these developments, whether they're HOAs or like this one or two that's potentially going to be converted, they all got one thing in common, real narrow streets, you can't park on them. And so they got to have, that would be a benefit to the people that are already there, if they have a big walking trail with, where you can ride bikes and walk on and not have to worry about getting run over by a car. So I think we ought to put that in it. And the only thing that I, I'm not sure, I know that we had a meeting with one of the people that has secured one of these, it may be the same one we're talking about, but they're, they were indicating the way it was drafted, that it was, there was not a way, was not a real good situation. Audrey knows more about it, and she can talk to Mr. Theriak and Arlene.
I think that we should have David Theriak provide comments back to council on that, and maybe what we could do, if it was suitable for council, is in late fall, after Mike and myself and special counsel have an opportunity to put a little bit more information to this, we could come back to council for more direction before we then begin the public hearing process, so that we're on, we're on the same page of where council would like us to be before we do the outreach to the community.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Great.
Wonderful. Counsel, does that sound good?
Good.
Okay.
Makes sense to me.
Yeah, okay, great, Peter. And I apologize, do we want a formal motion on this? Fred?
No, it's good.
Consensus.
Yeah.
I think we have our direction to come back. At that point, we might need to be preparing for an extension of the moratorium, because that would be the, we'd like to give you an update, give a report on what, where special counsel is, and then probably request an extension of the moratorium.
Okay. I think we're in violent agreement. That sounds great.
At that time, we should have some idea of how long it will take to get the details in there, you know, what kind of schedule you would have.
Thank you for your time. Absolutely, thanks, Mike. Item B, I think, right?
The next item, I'd like John Dolmier to come- Yes, the next item, I'd like John Dolmier to come forward. We have had some inquiries regarding houses that have frontage on Benita Beach Road, many of them had significant flooding issues, and want to get counsel's direction on some potential conversion of property, and that this would be looking at potentially city-initiated rezoning. I'm going to have John touch on the fact that because this is part of the Benita Beach Road Vision process, we did reach out to DPZ for some recommendations. I also had a very brief conversation with special counsel David Theriak, who reiterated that it is within the provisions of counsel to decide on rezonings, even when it extends beyond the property owner that's requesting that. So we can have further discussion on that afterwards.
Stole my thunder.
There you go.
Good evening, counsel. Oh, that didn't turn out very large. What we're looking at is property that is bound on the west side by Imperial, the south side by Benita Beach Road, the east by Quinn, and the north on Chapman. And that block, as you can see, is bordered on the west side by CVS, and on the east side by the smaller commercial building. And other than those two commercial buildings, all the other properties have been developed as single-family, and they have been developed as single-family for some time. In fact, this is one of the older neighborhoods in Benita Springs. When the city was incorporated, what happened was this property was given a general commercial future land use, as you can see from the future land use map that I'm showing you. And in fact, it wasn't just the property that's outlined that we're discussing, or the total property that we could be discussing, but also the two properties that were developed as commercial on the block. That transitions into the medium-density residential as you get further north, into the communities of Polly and Saunders. This is the zoning map for the same area. And this portion that we are discussing is zone TFC 2, the same as the rest of the neighborhood. The exception to that in the general area is, is the CVS, and also the small commercial building on the southeast side. The reason why we are coming to you today is because, if you remember correctly, and you drove past this property after Irma, many of those, those single-family houses that front along Benita Beach Road had water within them. And as a result, some of those, those properties were beyond what the landlords and the owners wanted to repair. In fact, one of those owners has torn the house down. There is a question as to how counsel would like to see what will be redevelopment, the extended redevelopment, we don't know at this point, but there will be redevelopment here. And where would you like us to go with this? The owner of the property that, that did tear his house down, and I think it is this property here, it's easy to spot when you drive past, there's not a house there. But that owner has expressed interest in redeveloping the property as commercial. We bring this to you, as Arlene said, with the possibility of a city-sponsored rezoning. And the reason why we would do this would be to match the comprehensive plan. The ways we could do this would be, if we decide to, would be to either, one, look at the rezoning of this entire block to match the future land use designation. Or, two, a more measured approach. And that would be to rezone properties that front Benita Beach Road. And then see where redevelopment leads from there, leaving your options open as you go forward. In my conversations with DPZ, they were actually very enthusiastic about the possibility of a city-sponsored rezon. They really did not weigh in heavily as to whether just the southern portion of the block, or whether the entire block should be included. I gathered from our discussion, they looked at a long-term impact would be the entire block, but in the short term, they left it up to your purview. And looked at several options if you did this, almost as a small master plan within the Beach Road overlay, where there's a possibility of having access to these properties along the north side, and getting rid of the, each of the individual driveways that are along Benita Beach Road. And a second possible idea for this area would be to require multi-story buildings. And that multi-story buildings would increase the possibility of like a live-work space, and would also provide a little bit more of a visual barrier between Benita Beach Road and those single-family houses just to the north. The good news in that is that there is already a connection on the west side for CVS that is, is north, so that the connection for these properties could start here, and then work its way along the, the north side of these properties. And also, something you may want to consider is if it is just the south side that is rezoned, we do have certain setbacks buffers between residential and commercial. These are very small lots. And as a result, those increased type of setbacks would make redevelopment very difficult. It would be my recommendation to kind of combine what has been presented by DPZ as a possible rear access for all of these, and use that as your setback for the commercial buildings. So I know I've thrown a lot into your lap, and I'm sure there are questions.
Additionally, I wanted, I also had a conversation with DPZ, and we might want...
Arlene, can you speak up a little bit?
Oh, yes. Additionally, I did have a conversation with DPZ, and we do want to ensure that any, any development on the north side, the part that reached Chapman, that they would be completely buffered, and that neighborhood entity would be intact. One of the key things they talked about was creating the possibility of having that alleyway, and then, and the, any, any commercial structures on Benita Beach Road would be brought up to the front of the road to impede any kind of impact to those other residents. This also could be something we could discuss, because as one of my other items on the, on the 15th, I was going to talk about the possibility of having DPZ assist us with more of these reviews, so that they can be part of the Benita Beach Road Visioning Study, and they could provide some further recommendation on how the most appropriate way to transition something like this would be.
Fred?
Yeah, I, I, number one, I favor this, but I want to give you some provisos. Both during the little flood, I know the mayor remembers that one, and the big flood, there was a lot of water on that land just beyond the drugstore going to the east, all the way along to I-75. Now, if we just approve it, what's going to happen, they're going to go in and they're going to raise that land up to like that drugstore. And all that foot and a half to two feet of water, whatever, was in there, it's got to go someplace else. It can't get in the Imperial River in a flood. It can't go in the storm sewer because the Beach Road was even flooded in that area. So the only way I know that you could do it, now, I think, I'm not suggesting this is it, I think we better get like the company that's on this retainer with us on the state citywide storm sewer district to look at this. Best way, I think, would be, they've got to elevate their stores so you can, so the water can go under it. And leave the roads and everything, the parking lot down in the flood zone, so that if you get flooded, they get flooded. But if you, if you fill that in, you're going, all you're going to do is make flooding worse for Quinn Street, or IBE, or somebody else, I'm telling you. Because you can't, you got to, that water's got to go someplace, and it can't get in the river, so.
What are your thoughts on that, John?
Oh, I agree 100%. And I would also say it extends beyond just flooding. I think that if council decides to rezone this property, and I didn't want to go into too much detail mainly because there hasn't been a lot of direction, but wherever you stop that commercial property, the impacts of that commercial, whether it be stormwater, whether it be aesthetics, or whether it be traffic, those all need to be mitigated against that, that existing residential neighborhood. So whatever you decide to do, that issue, along with several others, would be some of the foremost issues we would need to discuss in terms of transitioning that from the residential zoning into commercial.
Fred?
Just a quick question, John. If we, if we rezone that right now, through a citywide initiative, whatever you want to call it, so if you live on Chapman, so your house now it's residential, but if you go to sell it, you can sell it as a commercial property?
You would sell it as a commercial property, but it would be a single-family use. And you could keep it as a single-family use as long as you wished. However, at some point in the future, if you or a future owner wanted to redevelop as commercial...
You'd have to meet those standards or whatever.
Correct. You'd have commercial standards, you have to comply.
I guess that would be my recommendation. Let's do the whole block. That way, if someone wants to go in there and buy six or eight or 10 of them, and do something, put it on stilts, have parking below, because you're going to have to meet the parking requirements. Kind of like we did with the dentist office to the, to the west of there.
Very similar with it.
So that's what I would...
And actually, they don't have to go a full eight foot up. There, you could probably get by with three, four feet.
Well, I think the standard's going to be wherever their, wherever their structure starts, that's where it's got to be.
Right.
To meet the flood plan.
And just to decide...
I think you'd almost have to have an overlay to apply to that, to put in this thing, it must be elevated, because if you zone it, they're entitled to do what they want. And that would mean they go in, fill it up, and that's it.
No, you have building codes, don't you?
Peter, can I make a point with respect to Greg's comment?
Yes, Peter, please.
All right, I just want to make a point with respects to Greg's comment. I, I hear what he's, I hear what Greg's saying, but I'm a little concerned about those houses on Chapman. I clearly understand on Beach Road what the flooding is, but I'd rather take a measured approach, and maybe just can evolve, and deal with the properties that address Beach Road as commercial. Because, you know, I understand it's an option, but you're basically then, with respect to Chapman, the way Greg phrases it, I agree with that, but I kind of disagree a little because it puts pressure on those people who want to keep their homes. And there are a string of homes there that are nice homes. And I kind of think of this by analogy to over on the other side of Imperial, where Joe McCarris built his very nicely done set of office buildings that front on Beach Road. And they, they don't impact the residential homes behind them. So I'd rather kind of start small, because I think this could have elements of, we're the government, and we're here to tell you what to do, with respect to people who have residential property. I'd rather just start on Beach Road, and then think about Chapman Street, not swallow the whole thing.
I just got a, not a rebuttal. I agree with you, Peter, but I think what John said is those lots are awful small. You may not get any development until we get the backside of it. And I'll go with the dentist on the, would be the west side of Walgreens. He owns all the way to the back of Saunders. Now, he didn't develop it, and obviously, that's the other concern. If let's, I guess I'm thinking about it holistically, that if we just used the lots on the frontage of Beach Road, like John said, we do have regulations that you've, your, your buffer has to be so much versus a residential, you may not, we may not have anything that can go into that small of a space. That would be the only reason I would go the other way.
Okay, well, I, I'm with you on that. And, and my two cents on that, I was sitting with John Dolmier one day and Jay, and this is cheap analysis, so be it. But we were looking at what Joe did and this, and it actually looks like, and this is a little unfair, this is Lee County mapping, all right, but Lee County Appraiser mapping. It actually looks like these lots on Beach Road are deeper than what Joe has. So if he was able to pull it off there, in theory, it should be able to be pulled off here. But the devil's in the details. I agree with you on that.
And one of the things I want to bring forward, too, and we had the discussion with DPZ, there's different options of shared-use parking and, and clustering, that I think this might be an opportunity if the city wants to look at a city, a city-initiated rezoning, that we would work with DPZ on that process to show what, what creates the least impact and provides the regulations that are needed. There are some suggestions that they had regarding opportunities with, looking at sharing the uses there.
Correct. And I think a lot of, just, maybe this helps put a couple people at ease, a couple of the options they had looked at in terms of a design for access and redevelopment would include, you know, the, the idea of including access along the north property line would work if you did the entire block, or it would work if you only did half the block. So, so there are portions of their ideas that are very scalable. And if you started with half and decided you liked it, you could always come back later, finish the other half, or you could just decide to go in right away, and we can start from there. We can work either way.
I have another question. It is the case that the future land use is commercial for all of this property, right? So if we only did the front half, and some people in the back half wanted to do it, they would just have to come in for a zoning change, right?
That, that would always be a possibility for them. They could come, there could be every property owner along the north, half of that could come in and ask to have the same thing done there.
Correct.
Probably won't happen, but it could.
So for example, if, if they, if this empty lot, which I'm looking at here, I don't know, it's the one you were, you were referring to, decided that they needed those houses behind them, they could approach those two property owners and say, can I get joined in? And then they would come to us and say, can you make those commercial, too, so we could do our stuff?
They could, and one of two things can happen. They could always ask to be, it depends on if they ask early enough, they could ask to be included in the DPZ work. It could be very awkward, depending on what they request, but maybe it works out. Or after it's done, they could always come back in as a privately-sponsored rezoning for the same zoning that was on the south half.
Because when I first looked at this, I, I thought we should just do the front, because there were fewer houses, and I was concerned about having people who didn't request this to be included in this. But as long as we're, DPZ feels we can get some kind of development on the front, I think we should go there as a first step, but we could always do it in a two-step process. And also, but I have a comment about raising the property, because I think DPZ wants you to have it at ground level, right? So that people walking along could get in there, isn't that, what did they say about this?
I have not talked to them necessarily about the raised structures. However, it's, it's something that, they're architects. Solving design problems is what they do. So there are ways that you could have an entrance at grade, that the actual structure is higher, basically like a, steps up to a front porch. Or, or the entire structure can be raised, or somehow we handle stormwater a different way for, for this area. There's a number of options.
Well, the reason I brought it up is because I would not be in favor of putting any kind of regulation here until we have some kind of professional input into what we want to see here and how we want it to evolve over time. Because that's the, that's what we empowered them to do. But I think I'd be in favor of just the front.
Okay. Fred?
I would be in favor of having LPZ right away look at this. And the thing is, if you raise it up, the water wasn't running over the sidewalk and out on the road. It was all from the sidewalk into those properties. So you don't have to raise it up, like I said, where you drive under it, but we just cannot let them fill, whether it's a new home, or it's commercial along that river. Because you're going to, you're just going to make your flooding situation worse next time. So what we have to do is raise it up enough that it allows the water that was on there with the Irma flood, and you're, you're good. And the Irma flood didn't put the water over the sidewalks and out on the road.
I agree. In fact, the water is the reason why we're here, so...
But I think, I think this is something LPZ could do fairly quickly and come back, so present something to counsel that'd be a little more thought out, including the raising and all that. And they may have a better idea, but I, I think that's the only way you can do it.
I think this evening, we're just looking for the direction of whether you'd like us to pursue a city-initiated, and at that point, we would work with not only DPZ, but special counsel on that.
Yeah. The other point, and since we're talking about water, if by any chance, in order to accomplish the stormwater management that Fred is presenting, would require more space than the front, that would be a reason to do the whole thing. So that, you know, we could get some kind of stormwater management, but, you know, we're way into the project by then. And I don't know if DPZ could give us some heads up on that or not.
We'll, we'll see what they can provide. And if, and if they're not the source, we could find another source.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Are we, I guess, in agreement?
I think we do need a motion whether you'd like staff to begin pursuing a, a city-initiated rezoning.
I'll make that motion.
And then the location.
I'll second.
Second.
Okay, this has been a motion.
And that would be for what portion of the property?
That would be the southern portion. I'm here, that would be...
I would be in favor of southern. I don't know what anybody else thinks about it.
Yeah, southern.
Southern, just the front.
Fred?
Yep, second.
Peter, southern, okay. Got a motion and a second, southern portion? Is that good? Do you need more? Okay.
Sure.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Gibson?
Aye.
Counselor Ford?
Aye.
Counselor Rumba?
Aye.
Counselor DeWitt?
Aye.
Counselor Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Counselor Don'tley?
Aye.
Okay. Item C, Arlene.
Yes, before you, Matt Feeny to come forward. We've been working and his public works department has been working for a very long time on this project and fortunately, the bid came in much higher than we expected, but due to public interest in this project, we did reach out back to the engineer for suggestions on how the, how we might negotiate a lower price. Many of them extend the timeframe of when we would address this issue and we wanted some direction from council as far as if you'd like us to continue with this project. We would be funding it into the next fiscal year as well. And I'll let Matt any other details to that.
Thanks, hi, Matt.
Hi, Matt Feeny, Public Works Director for the record. Pretty much this is a unique project when it comes to dredging. The permits required to perform it and the location particularly that it's in the Estero Bay Aquatic Preserve presented serious challenges to getting it permitted. So it took two years to get permitted with a special permit condition to do oyster mitigation, which was performed during the season when oysters put out their spawn for new oyster bars. That was this spring. So we are in a position to conduct the dredging, we put the project out to bid and based on contractor pricing, as a result primarily, I think, from them being covered up with work from Hurricane Irma, the prices came back higher than we anticipated. But I think, given the challenges with this project, we would look for you to consider advancing it and moving forward. The engineer really didn't give us a sense that if you do give additional time, that you're gonna see a significant price reduction and it will just chew into your permit time that you have to conduct this.
My thought on this is absolutely to advance it, but I'm just wondering, because I don't know the answer or wouldn't be asking the question. We have to, September 5th, right, we're gonna have September 5th for the budget and then we're gonna have September, whatever it is, for the second budget meeting to finalize A million percent in support of this, but where we're tightening the belt everywhere, what if we open this up for bids again?
Our bid process is about three months. We advertise for a month. You get the project back, you schedule it for city council's consideration and then it typically takes about a month to work the paperwork out. So it's just a time constraint.
Yep, I understand, I just wanted to ask, do we have, you said something about a timeline?
Peter, I'd like to make a motion to approve and do it quickly and the reason is, prices is obviously going up, that's the problem we've had here and that's just a reality. And I think, you know, with all the work that's been done, with all the Army Corps work, et cetera, et cetera, try while the iron's hot and just go ahead and approve this is my view.
Mike, as you were saying?
I'll second it.
Second.
Yeah, you had mentioned something about permit time, so we have the permits, do they have an end date, we have to have the?
Yeah, they have about a five-year, five-year period and you're into the permit for about a year right now.
Yeah, because as you said, you know, with Irma, all the construction companies are very busy, so we're getting high prices. I think they're gonna be busy for a while, so I don't think we're gonna see much better prices for quite a long time, so.
And that was the guidance we received from the engineers as well.
I'd like to have.
Fred?
Okay, in the public comment that came in, everybody was talking about all this extra buildup of silt, sand or whatever out in the kind of the mouth. So my question is, if we do this project, is that gonna take care of that issue or does that take a different permit?
Part of that is covered, the entrance to that channel is in this project limit. So there was a post-storm survey done that you have to do for, to bid the construction documents and that was done, I want to say February of this year, so that has been caught in that survey as well.
So we can take it back to where it was before the Irma?
I don't know what limits there, the general public's concerned about, but I can tell you that the mouth, as it comes out of Spring Creek, is addressed in this project.
Good.
Counsel, I'm Laura, sorry.
Well, I was just wondering, did Peter O'Flin, did you make a motion?
He did and there's been a second.
I was just wondering that myself. I think, I believe I did, I'd like to move to.
Yeah, no, you did, Peter, you absolutely did, buddy. There's been a motion and a second and we're just having a discussion.
Okay.
I'd like to speak to this. I had a number of calls, this is in my district and I've been monitoring it for the whole two and a half years I've been on council. And my understanding is that the permits that were given to do this project, we're not supposed to say this really, but are really quite unusual. They're not easy to get. So my opinion is, is while we have the permission to do this legally, we should do it and nobody wants to accept a bid that is so off of the expectation, but in the long run, I think this is a project that needs to be done and I think it dovetails with our other Spring Creek water, stormwater management thing. It's all, it's the end part of that, is that correct, Matt?
Yes, this is identified.
We have projects that are going way upstream to that and it makes sense that you get the lower stream done and then gradually do the rest so that when it flows through, it'll come in there. So there are all kinds of reasons why we should have this. If there is by any chance that we could get somebody to help pay for this, I don't know, I think we've already explored that, I'd be in favor of that, but irrespective of that, I think we should definitely go ahead with this project. And I got a number of calls and all the emails, you can check on my, they've sent them to me, I don't know if they sent them to you too, but there's definitely public support for this and they've been waiting a long time.
I would say this would be something that we should let the mayor go and talk to Ernie and see if Ernie wouldn't help cover some of that because there is some benefit to flooding and all that. We're not asking to pay for the whole thing, but maybe some part of the overage.
Happy to do so, who knows where it'll go, but happy to do so. Great recommendation. Okay, there's been a motion and a second to approve, further discussion, roll call, please.
Councilman Ford?
Aye.
Councilman Grumbaugh?
Aye.
Councilman Duett?
Aye.
Councilman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flin?
Aye. Excellent. Thank you for your patience.[1022.43][1022.43](APPLAUSE). Not the last item, but it probably felt like it, right, on tonight's agenda, so. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you so much. Okay, Mayor and?
Sorry, Mayor, I had a couple, sure, quick updates. We wanted to remind you all that August 6th is the deadline for us submitting our local mitigation strategy projects to the state of Florida, staff is with APTM, with Shanti Copeland, our consultants have been working on that. We will provide you with a list of all the projects that are submitted and we will be going through the list as well and we will provide that so that you have a copy of that for August 6th, since we won't have another council meeting in between then. And our matches are secured in the proposed budget as well. The other item, I did have a conference call with DPC today and we will be looking at the next meeting to give for your consideration some possible change orders to the agreement we have to look at them providing some overview and oversight on projects on Old 41 Road as well as potentially Benita Beach Road as, so that we are, as we're in the interim of deciding what regulations will come forward as far as form-based code and then where, how we're gonna implement the vision on Benita Beach Road, having them provide some additional insight on those so that we're in compliance with the vision, technical support to staff, we wanted to bring that for your consideration and we're gonna look to do that on the 15th. And then the other item is, we're looking is, because we've gotten a lot more interest and Old 41 is looking at a small change order to have them an open house workshop prior than to coming back to city council for the introduction to the form-based code. So we'll bring that back to the meeting on the 15th. After the workshop, we'll then consider working on some of those recommendations. As you recall, council asked us to come back with quick fixes, low hanging fruit, midterm and then long-term ranges and we do need to look at where the cost is as well in those items and looking at that being part of the Benita Beach Road Vision Capital Improvements item, so we'll be bringing that back as well.
Okay. Anything else?
I think that's everything.
Great, thank you, thank you very much, Arlene. Okay, Mayor and council member items, Amy.
I do want to recognize Adam Jobbers Miller, the loss of life of Fort Myers police officer and it just reinforces my appreciation for all the works that's done by our own sheriff and how one doesn't ever know what kind of situations we're gonna be faced with and just thankful for all our first responders. The second one is kind of a little funny one because some of you women or maybe the men might have noticed that I was featured in E. Bella magazine, which was fine, it's kind of fun to be a celebrity once in a while, but the problem was that they got the story wrong. They mentioned that I was the trailblazer and was the first woman to be on city council, which is not what I said in the interview. So I just want to give a shout out to Martha Simons, who was the trailblazer, the first woman to sit on Benita City Council, and to Janet Martin who followed her and to my fellow councilwoman here to say that we are all trailblazers, but we don't want to sell short the path that was followed before us and thank you for doing that.
Great.
And I think that's it.
Great, thank you, Amy, and congratulations for everything you're doing and Laura and everybody else and us men too, every now and then. Greg, speaking of men, Greg?
I just want to go on record to say I'm a little concerned, it's not about members report, just, we set the mileage tonight at a level which I hope doesn't bite us in the near where in the future. I mean, and the only reason I say that is if we go ahead with the two taxes, the hidden taxes or whatever Mike wants to call them, the two taxes, we just spent one of those tonight with Spring Creek, which is very much needed. So I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that we, I would love to reconsider it, I know that Kathy come up and talked about, you know, if you were out of your house, how many people are gonna take advantage of that, you know, I just hope we don't have a shortfall. I really don't because I would hate to see us have a shortfall in the future and not be able to provide the services that we've provided in the past and in the future. That's all. I think we're doing good things, I just, I'm a little worried, that's all.
Thank you, Greg. Trailblazer, number two here this evening. Number four overall.
And it's late, so I have a couple of things, but I'm just gonna just go with, I too am so saddened with the loss of our Fort Myers police officer and am so grateful for our sheriff, police, firefighters, first responders and, you know, I'm going to the ceremony for him, so. That's all.
Right, well, thank you very much. Mike? You're good. Fred?
Yeah, one thing, this week I met with John Jenkins from BSU and Arlene was having kind of parallel meetings and he's gonna double back with her, but I think we'll probably have a project where we can get somewhere between 120 and 140 homes off septic tanks, most of which are over 10 to 20 years old. And that particular area happens to be all affordable workforce housing, so that even opens up the possibility, we might get some help on some funding from good old HUD, call it. And I know that BSU is, they're very, they're more, they're very enthusiastic, although John is representing, like Arlene, the city manager, he's representing, being the CEO of, he's got a board to answer to, so he's gonna bring it up to the board at their meeting, but I think that, I think that we have a good chance. Another reason I think we do, if you look at that thing that Carol Green put together, we can get for the amount of money that we would be spending collectively, let's say 700 grand, we can get twice as many septic tanks off per dollar as those communities that got to 500,000 and the 250 and all that. The reason for that, they're all on big lots spaced far apart and this area of Morton Grove is very dense, very, you know, fairly narrow lots, more standard city, so we can, and it's also a wetland, so it's a good thing. And I want to compliment Arlene on what a great job she's been doing to date as the interim city manager. I think she's doing a very good job.
Ditto.
Thank you, Fred. Thank you, Fred. Peter?
Yeah, thanks, Pete. I just want to give council a heads up that the next meeting, I'm gonna put a green sheet in with respect to a permanent city manager and I'll give you a little hint of where I'm going, is when you have an all-star in the field, you don't go looking to do trades. So I just want to give you a heads up on that.
No, that's great, thank you, Peter. In fact, that was one of my items, I've mentioned it here before. I think, well, never mind, I think, I know I'd be in favor of making Arlene our permanent city manager. I've mentioned it before. I know we can't tell Arlene about the deputy city manager, assistant city manager. Matt Feeny, I think, has stepped up to the plate in so many different ways, as have others, but I have discussed this with Arlene, I have discussed it with Matt, so we'll let that go where it may, but what I want to make clear is what I've also discussed and I look forward to the discussion is, if you think back to when we had Carl, when we had Arlene and when we had Matt, that was obviously three positions. I'm looking at it now, the new structure being two positions, not filling, not filling a third vacancy, so to speak, but between Arlene and Matt, covering those three positions. Arlene was receptive to the idea, she had some ideas and we're certainly worked through that, but overall, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, you were receptive to that idea, Arlene, right? As was Matt, so I look forward to the discussion. So when we think about, you know, or potentially what we're doing, tightening up the budget, it's, you know, I would have recommended this even if we were plush and fat with cash, whatever you want to call it, but given, given what we're looking at, I think it's a very timely conversation, so, absolutely. So what else I had on here, I met with all the area mayors today for Lee County and Kevin Ruane, as you know, has been appointed the Southwest Florida liaison to the governor on all things water, water issues, Lake Okeechobee, water releases. We had a very productive meeting today, I want to let you know, Tad and others that might care to report on it, but obviously to let city council know that the governor a month ago did declare a state of emergency as we know and we are going to be doubling our efforts down with the governor and the details have not all been worked out, but I did just get a text from Mayor Ruane about a half an hour ago. He did have a discussion with the governor, the details are being worked out, but I think if you want to get, you know, drill down on the numbers, we don't know the numbers yet, but we're very optimistic that more, more money is coming for the algae, for the fish, for the blue-green algae, the green-green algae, the red tide and every other thing that's tragically going on in this area, we are doubling down, drilling down, tripling down with the governor and Governor Scott is stepping up to the plate. Like I said, we don't have specific numbers yet, but that is moving rapidly as we speak. And as you know, the, if you looked at the media, unfortunately, they're piling up fish, they're picking them up. It has started on Fort Myers Beach and Sanibel and they will, they will address other areas as we get there. So that is the state of the emergency. We mentioned this fallen police officer. As best I know, right now, this Sunday, and I don't have the address, but will be the viewing hours for the police officer up in Fort Myers. We can certainly get the details, but I know Mayor Henderson said today that that is going to be Sunday, I believe it's from 4:00 to 7:00. Now, August 6th, which is Monday, the funeral, I am 99% sure, is at noon on Monday, August 6th and it's going to be at Jermaine Arena, correct? Right, yeah. So that's where we are and what else have you got there, buddy? Oh, I'm sorry, yes, so the viewing, thank you, the viewing will be at the Gendron Funeral Home on, ooh, Friday?
No, hold on, sorry. I lied.
You lied, that's all right.
That's later email.
Oh, okay, nope, that's all good. The viewing will be held Sunday, August 5th from 4:00 to 9:00 PM at Gendron Funeral Home, which is 2325 East Mall Drive, that's up behind the Edison Mall, I believe, Fort Myers and the viewing is obviously open to the public. A full honors funeral ceremony will take place Monday, August 6th at 12 o'clock noon. The ceremony will be held at Jermaine Arena, 11,000 Everglades Parkway, Estero, Florida and that's. and that service is also open to the public. Thank you for that, Greg. And I want to let you know that Jesse Purdon, Carmine, Lieutenant Carmine Marcino, from the Lee County Sheriff's Office, myself, State Representative Byron Donalds, State Representative Bob Rommel, and others, I know the list is growing, but we are going to have a fundraiser for the family, and that's gonna be, it's gonna be in Benita Springs. There, again, unfortunately, details are still being worked out, but it will be the evening of the 14th, and
What day is the week?
That's a Tuesday. Tuesday, August 14th, there will be a fundraiser for Lee and Collier County for the family of the fallen officer. So details to follow, but that's, that's where we are at the moment. I want to thank everybody. We've got, we covered a lot of information, and I enjoy working with all of you, and let's hang tough, and, which I know we will. And we're gonna get through this budget season, we will get it figured out. And thank you, everybody, for a great meeting. So now we are going on to the approval of the minutes.
Can I ask two questions, or three?
You had your chance, but go ahead.
Okay, well, number one.
Council items?
No, an idea that you can talk to Kevin about, but all this stuff that's coming down and screwing up the beaches and all that, it is gonna affect tourism and business. I'm hoping that the governor can come up.
I can let you know that was in the specific ask.
Okay.
Yes.
Second thing, there should only be one green sheet on making Arlene the city manager, so I'm assuming you're gonna do that, or?
Peter said he was gonna do it, I can do it, it makes no difference.
Well, and I think, and I, well, you've already.
Before, excuse me, before Fred was going to talk, I was gonna obviously suggest that, considering what you said tonight, Peter, is obviously more appropriate coming from you.
Okay, so Arlene, you want to put in that green sheet from me?
Yeah, there is.
Was that, can you handle that one? All right, my dear. And Fred can type it up for you, and Peter can proof it, and I'll look for the typos. How's that? All right. No, that's very good. Anything else, Fred?
Yep.
All right, buddy, anything else? Okay. Motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
And that's obviously for July 9th and the 18th? Okay. July 9th, anyway. Yeah, okay, the minutes, okay. Motion to approve, there's been a motion and a second. Further discussion, roll call, please.
Councilwoman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Plin?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Ford?
Aye.
Okay, public comment. Kathy McGrath. Well, you're here, I figured, no, you don't have to, no, no.
You're the last of the Mohicans.
You are the last of the Mohicans.
Always.
The old version, or the one that came out with Daniel Day-Lewis? Which version are you?
The old version.
The old version, all right. Fair enough.
Anyway, I'll close the meeting by saying, the end of this, when you talked about Arlene, made my day. I mean, that kind of overpowers all the bad stuff that you had to say, because, well, she deserves it. And thank you very much. Now, I think you can take the rest of the day off.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved. We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.